Morning, everyone. Welcome to Renfrew County Council's meeting for Wednesday, October the 28th. I'll call the meeting to order. I ask you to please stand for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Moro, I'll ask you to do a roll call, please.
Thank you, Warden. councillor Bennett.
Here.
councillor Bros.
Present.
councillor Doncaster.
Present.
councillor Donahue.
Here.
councillor Emo.
Present.
councillor Gross.
Here.
councillor Hunt.
Here.
councillor Keller. councillor Love.
Present.
councillor Lynch.
Here.
councillor Murphy.
Here.
councillor Pickett. councillor Rigier.
Present.
councillor Reinhold.
Here.
warden Robinson.
Present.
councillor Sweet. Got it? councillor TJ.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moro. Any disclosure of canary interests and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, I need a motion to obdow minutes of county council of September 30th, 2020. Can we move her into second place? Moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Bros. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. As we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. Members of county council. Before I start telling you what I've been up to the past month, I would like to publicly congratulate our director of development and property Craig Kelly on his recent academic achievement. Mr. Kelly obtained his diploma in municipal administration while working full-time during a pandemic. This speaks highly not only of his motivation, but his work ethic as well. Additionally, Craig was inducted into the Association of Municipal Managers and Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario's academic honor roll. Truly impressive. Craig, the county branch was very fortunate to have you as our director of development and property, and we look forward to the many contributions that I'm sure you will be making to our municipality in the future. Mr. Kelly is a man of many talents, of which some we will be showcasing later on in this meeting. County council, during the month of October, I attended 19 meetings on county business. The county continues to hold emergency operations center meetings weekly to review the current pandemic situation and our safety measures moving forward. Discussion also continued regarding testing, contact tracing, and updating messages to the public. In the month of October, we have seen a significant rise in the number of COVID-19 positive cases in Renfrew County. As leaders in our community, it is our job and it is important for us to reinforce a message of vigilance, ensuring that our communities and families are safe. At the same time, we recognize the economic impacts of the pandemic. As we look forward, we will continue to work with all levels of government to ensure that we build a community that is safe and reliant. On October 2nd, I, along with councillor Bob Sweet, CAO Paul Moro, director of emergency services Michael Nolan, director of development and property Craig Kelly, and director of long-term care Shelley Shidi, met with MPP Yakubusky, Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry. This was one of the quarterly meetings we try to have with our MPP to share ideas and discuss county council priorities. Our focus at this meeting centered on a number of important initiatives. We provided a progress report on our service delivery improvement project, which included our desire to use a safe restart funding for capital purchases that will allow us to conduct operations safely and effectively. Ministry Yakubusky was on board with our request, and I've since sent a follow-up letter to Ministry Yakubusky as well as Minister Steve Clark. I'm still waiting for a response. We also discussed the ICIP funding for Algonquin Trail and our request from the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry to allow for the use of compiled plans for the transfer of rail lines through Crown land. Of course, we spoke about Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center, operating on a permanent basis post-pandemic, and the need for long-term funding commitment. We also touched on COVID-19 testing delays and the need for asymptomatic testing, community paramedics, and virtual long-term care. Director Shelley Shidi's presentation regarding long-term care and the need for each resident to receive a minimum of four hours of care per day was not a new concept for Minister Yakubusky, and as we have seen from the preliminary report from Ontario's Long-Term Care COVID-19 Commission, it is a concept long overdue for implementation and is getting widespread media coverage. Families are jumping on board. This must happen for our residents. MPP Yakubusky supports the county in all of these initiatives and will continue to work with the appropriate ministry to advocate on behalf of council. Excuse me. On October 8th, I, along with Mr. Moro and councillor Jennifer Murphy, held a virtual meeting with representatives from Strategy Corps to share some of county council's comments regarding the draft document. I believe the consultants understood the issues. However, we will know more tomorrow when we review the next draft that will be presented to county council on November 4th. The same day, I had the opportunity to join councillor James Bros and director of social services Laura Pean, along with Mr. Moro and Mr. Kelly, to hear a presentation from Shayla Brecken on social housing, immigration, and economic development. Shayla is a dynamic, energetic young woman with a vast knowledge of communities and how communities can assist newcomers. I've no doubt we will be hearing much from her in the future. On October 15th, I, along with Mr. Moro, chief Nolan, and councillor Michael Donahue, met virtually with Minister Yakubusky to discuss funding shortfalls for COVID-19 testing sites at some of our rural communities. Once again, I followed up this meeting with a letter to Minister Yakubusky, who has since spoken to the premier as well as other cabinet members. I believe a funding solution is in the works. On October 20th, I did radio interviews with my FM Star 96 regarding the need for VTAC to receive ongoing funding post-pandemic, to ensure that people who do not have a family doctor will still have access to virtual primary care. We are trying to reach out to the thousands of people who have accessed VTAC and are asking them to share their VTAC stories with the premier. I also did an interview on Heritage Radio October 22nd, relaying the same message. On October 21st and 22nd, I attended the Virtual Ontario East Municipal Conference. Topics of discussion included municipal broadband, key challenges and opportunities for Ontario municipalities in post-pandemic, affordable housing initiative in Canada and beyond, Ontario's programs and services to support growth and recovery, and regional COVID economic recovery modeling. October 23rd was Ontario's annual childcare appreciation day. I was pleased to make a video on behalf of county council thanking the many childcare workers in our community who staff and operate childcare centers throughout Renfrew County. Without them, our families would not be able to cope. Coming up this Friday, I, along with chief Nolan, will be doing a virtual delegation at the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus meeting, where we will present on Renfrew County VTAC. We will be asking for the caucus to endorse our resolution, asking the provincial government for permanent funding for VTAC. I want to thank Pembroke City Mayor Mike Lemay for arranging for us to be on the agenda. Friday afternoon in Renfrew, I will have the distinct pleasure of finally meeting Minister of Long-Term Care, the Honorable Dr. Mary Lee Fullerton, as she makes a much anticipated announcement. In closing, I want to express on behalf of county council our condolences to former county treasurer Jim Kaczyk on the passing of his father-in-law Howard Keel. I will remind those assembled here of the following. The county of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council.
Warden, if I might, I was, and I apologize, I was left standing in the blocks when the starter's pistol went off. With respect to the minutes of the September 30th, I did have a proposal to revise as presented, given that the, I will give you the nature of the revision. At the very end, it was omitted. There was a recorded vote held on the recommendation on the budget guidelines. That recorded vote was not contained within the minutes. As I'd indicated, now that that motion has been passed, perhaps the way to approach this is I'm prepared to make a motion to rescind the adoption of the minutes. I think perhaps, Mr. Moro, if you can shed some light on the appropriate means, that does require a two-thirds vote to rescind.
Yeah, and that would be the appropriate course of action. So that motion's on the table, warden, and it would need a seconder.
Yes. A seconder for the motion, please. Councillor Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor? opposed? carried. Thank you.
Now, if I might, then I would like to make a motion to amend the minutes, that they be included in the minutes right at the end with respect to item number 14 from the Finance Administration report, that they include the results of the recorded vote.
And a seconder for that motion, please. councillor Emo. Any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Now, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to approve the minutes as amended. councillor Donahue, councillor Hunt, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. I apologize if I missed your hand when we were doing the minutes.
You did not unless you saw it while before it was raised. It was all entirely mine.
Right. So our delegation today, our delegation will update us on the current treaty negotiations between Canada, Ontario, and the Algonquins of Ontario, as well as proposed lands package. In Emo's document Municipal Government and the Crown's Duty to Consult, Emo had five recommendations, one of which states that the Crown will involve municipal governments in land claim and treaty implementation scenarios affecting municipal jurisdiction. I'm very pleased to see that occurring here today. I will now turn the mic over to our presenters Doug Carr, Ontario Chief Negotiator, CB Papen, spokesperson for the Ontario Aboriginal Affairs Secretariat, Jennifer Griffin, Senior Negotiator, Ontario Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, Alison McLaren of Indigenous Affairs, Cara Hernold, and Norm Limke, co-chairs of the Municipal Advisory Committee, Municipal Focus. Please take it away.
Good morning, Warden Robinson. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning. Unfortunately, not in person as we were able to the last time. But as we hear from your address this morning, it hasn't stopped Renfrew County from being very busy, so congratulations on the way you're managing through this pandemic. Really appreciate the time this morning. We do have a number of members of the Ontario team available this morning and who are online to address county council. We originally had scheduled November. However, the preference for county council was October, and it worked out extremely well calendar-wise for a number of our participants today. So we're pleased to have the group that you just identified. Doug Carr, who was our chief negotiator for Ontario, has been obviously very busy and working very well with the local municipalities and upper-tier municipalities. We really do appreciate the fact that the CAO group for the land claim area and your CAO Paul Moro has participated with the Municipal Focus group in a very meaningful and a very helpful way over the past number of years. It's been a real asset to have that insight from the CAO group, and we appreciate not only that group, but the other staff who have worked with Cara on planning matters and a variety of others. So we're planning on a number of areas to cover today. Doug will do an overview of where we're at and where we're going with the treaty negotiations. CB Papen, who most of you will be familiar with, is our communications advisor and has participated in most, if not all, of the municipal work going on. Jennifer Griffin and Alison McLaren will speak to the slide deck that I hope everyone received, and thank you, Rose, for sending that out yesterday. Appreciate that. It will be a good guideline to help update county council. And as I said, Cara, who has been working not only with the elements of that deck, but also on the local planning preparation for land transfers. So we'll start, warden, if you are agreeable with Doug Carr doing an overview of the treaty negotiations. And Doug, I think you're online there, so if you would do that overview, please.
Thank you, Norm, and good morning to, good morning to Warden Robinson and the members of council, and thank you very much for the opportunity to address county council on treaty negotiations between Canada, Algonquins, and Ontario. I'm gonna make a little early apology here. I live on a farm in a valley about halfway between Toronto and Barry in a little place called Tottenham, and my internet is pretty uncertain. So I may have to turn the video off to stay connected, so let's see how this goes. If you're having trouble hearing me, please speak up. In a dynamic you'll be familiar with, cable is coming to the township of New Tecumseh, but I live in the extreme east end of the township, and of course, they're starting in the extreme west end of the township to install the cable, so it's gonna take a while. And so we spoke, I and my team, we spoke to county council last November the 12th, so it's been almost exactly a year. And everybody will be familiar with the fact that the treaty negotiation has been a very long and slow process, and sometimes over the space from one year to another, there's not actually a whole lot that I can report. But I'm happy to say that this time, despite the pandemic, that we have substantially picked up the pace in the treaty negotiations. And so since we last met, we have really zeroed in on financial compensation for the Algonquins, and we have really zeroed in on the land package. And of course, these are two kind of heart core areas in which the treaty is trying to provide compensation to the Algonquins to address their issues in the land claim. So we've done very well despite the pandemic in the last year, in fact, well enough on the lands package that we're now in a position to conduct our third major round of public consultations on the updates that we've made to that lands package. And so you may be aware already that on Monday of this week, October 26th, we mailed out three or four thousand letters to people, providing them with the updated information, which we negotiated. And in a couple of minutes, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Jennifer Griffin, who is our lands negotiator, and she'll take you through this little slide deck, which is gonna set out some of the details on the lands package, which is probably the issue that's nearest and dearest, I would say, to Warden and the members of council here today. We found, as you probably have at council, Zoom has been made for quite a different way to negotiate in many ways. And I wouldn't say it's been all bad, that we are able to continue to make progress. And everyone is sort of adapted on the Algonquin federal and Ontario sides to the Zoom process. And so we are moving on at a pretty good pace despite the fact that we can't move any person. So with lands and money, we hope pretty much completed for our treaty process. We're turning to the other elements that were in the agreement in principle that we signed in 2016. And those are things like harvesting heritage and culture and addressing the province's duty and federal government's duty to consult with the Algonquins. So there's a lot of important work to be done yet, but we're feeling like we have quite a bit of momentum now based on our successes on the land and the money. Of course, our successes on the land are conditional on what we hear back in the public consultation. So we'll know more about that shortly, and Jen will take you through that process. And I would just say that, you know, we're on track to complete the negotiations in 2023. That's our objective here. And we think that we're gonna be able to meet that objective. So that's what I wanted to say by way of an overview. And maybe, I don't know, Madam Chair, whether you want us to, whether I should pause here for some questions or whether it's better for Jennifer to just go straight into the details on the public consultation on the land.
Well, thank you very much, Doug, and it's very nice to have you with us today. I'm just going to look for some direction from the rest of my council here. I just have to enlarge my screen because I can't see everyone. So council members, what is your wish? Do you want to, the issue, however, that I'm going to have is if the presenter is sharing the screen, I'm not going to be able to see all of you right away. But if you bear with me, if you have questions, you can ask them during the presentation or hold off to the end. What are your wishes? Nobody's choosing any, so I guess I'll choose for us. I will, I will let you ask questions as we go along. How's that? That'll work better, I think, for everyone. So any questions for Doug so far? Look at how easy that is. So nope, none yet. Thank you very much, Doug. And you said Jennifer is up next?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you again for entertaining our delegation today. My particular process and approach to this slide deck is to just walk you through the proposed settlement lands package. So as Doug mentioned, there have been some changes to the proposed settlement lands. So I know a number of folks will be familiar with the large public consultation outreach that was undertaken in 2012 with the release of the Agreement in Principle for the Algonquin negotiations. Ontario did a second round of public consultation in 2017. And so we had a series of open houses and municipal engagement. And I know that there was keen interest from a number of the municipalities throughout the Algonquin settlement area to better understand the intersection and the interplay between the proposed settlement lands and municipal planning. So what we're looking to do right now, between 2017 and today, we've undertaken to do a modification to some of the settlement lands. And I'm gonna walk through, excuse me, slide three, please. Thank you very much. I think it's important to characterize the negotiations right now. To Doug's point is that we are certainly seeing forward momentum in the negotiations and being able to conclude our public consultation on the proposed lands package enables us to move forward with the other pieces of the negotiation. So at this point in time, the proposed settlement lands package includes two suites of things. One, the settlement lands that consist of both Crown and acquired Crown lands. And these are the lands that are proposed to be transferred directly to the Algonquins of Ontario. Those are the lands that are gonna be held in B-Simple. And for the bulk of those lands, they'll be subject to, of course, municipal planning, excuse me, direction. The other component of the settlement lands package is the creation of a new provincial park and an addition to the existing provincial park at Lake St. Peter. Those two protected areas will remain in Crown control, but the process for creating those parks is through the treaty negotiation. So it's a slightly different approach. I suspect council's very much aware and familiar with the Lands for Life and Ontario's Living Legacy process that was undertaken about 25 years ago by Ontario. This is a different process. These protected areas will be created through the treaty legislation. In terms of the changes in the lands package from 2017, we understood that at the time, the Algonquins had expressed a keen interest in additional lands, particularly in the northern part of the claim settlement area. This is largely because there is a fairly large population of Algonquins who reside in the Matawa and North Bay area. And there was a view that there was a lack of a large settlement parcel to enable the Algonquins to undertake primarily cultural practices, harvesting, et cetera. So since 2017, we have negotiated a new land parcel in the unincorporated township in Nipissing. It's about, the addition's about 7,600 acres. That makes up the bulk of the new lands that have been identified. But we've also gone through the process of looking at the parcels and identifying certain parcels where either the Algonquins' use has changed or there are public interests that we heard through the consultation process that require a change in the particular parcels themselves. We've noticed, I think, in the last two years through the negotiation process, that there has been a trend towards consolidation of lands into larger parcels. So the total number of parcels have decreased by about 10%. In terms of what that means on the ground, in 2017, we had about 265 odd parcels, which of course is dispersed throughout the entire settlement area. Now we're at about 230 parcels. So it is a reduction. It's just reflective that the interest of the Algonquins, particularly as future managers of those lands, trying to understand how best to meet the interests of their communities. As well, we've, through fieldwork and assessment, we've actually identified about 3,000 additional acres that will be added to the proposed protected area at Lake St. Peter and at Crotch Lake in Frontenac. So I'm not sure if folks respond to numbers. I'm a fairly visual person, so I like to see how things are reflected on the ground. And what I wanted to highlight here is we actually have 43 municipalities in the claim area are affected by proposed settlement land parcels. Approximately 12% of the parcels are new. So these are new sites that were not identified in 2017. Some of those sites are sites that the Algonquins had identified historically in the claim negotiations leading up to the Agreement in Principle. About 14% of the parcels from 2017 have been removed from the settlement lands package, and we've undertaken modifications to approximately 15%. Within the modifications, in some cases, for example, as we got better geographic information, I'm sure the municipalities are more than aware of the challenges that we have with our underlying township and GIS layers. With better information, in some cases, we've had to adjust and shift boundaries because what's on the ground wasn't actually matching up with what was on the maps. And approximately 59% of the parcels remain unchanged. So these are, you know, essentially the same as what we talked to the public about in 2017. So what I wanted to do is just give you a sense within Renfrew County where we've had some of the changes. This isn't the full suite of lands within Renfrew that have been modified or changed, but it gives you a sense across the county where we've seen modifications to the package. So Big Gibson Lake, as part of the negotiations, folks might recall, there was a fairly large land selection at Waterloo Lake. You'll see down at the bottom, the last bullet, rec 255. As a result of better understanding of the historic use of those lands, there was a view that the site at Gibson Lake was actually more culturally significant and historically important to the Algonquins. So the Algonquins made a decision and requested that Ontario consider a reduction of approximately, it was about 3,000 acres at Waterloo Lake, and shifting that acreage up to Big Gibson. So this particular parcel is east of Du Riviera and fronts the Ottawa River. So it's between Highway 17 and the Ottawa River. In the course of our consultations that we've undertaken, we have heard from one individual who does use those lands. So we're following up with that individual to get a better sense of what their use has been. In terms of the OPP detachment in Renfrew, so this is a new location. Ontario, the ministry was made aware by Infrastructure Ontario that those lands are becoming surplus, and there was an interest on the part of the Algonquins to add those lands to their settlement package. Likewise, there's the MTO lands at Brayside. So this parcel is between Renfrew and Armpryor, right off Highway 17. Those lands, as a result of modifications to highway planning and design, were identified by MTO as being surplus, and the Algonquins indicated an interest in acquiring those lands. At the same time, folks are probably aware that there is currently a land selection at Calabogie Peaks. And in the course of the negotiations, the Algonquins asked for additional land at that site. Now, we do know and we have heard from the Calabogie Peaks owner. We've been playing phone tag. I know the Algonquins have reached out to them and are looking at things like partnership development, but we're certainly aware there is a keen interest in better understanding the use of the Eagles Nest Trail. So I think folks are probably pretty familiar with that area. Our understanding, for example, a couple of weeks ago, that there was a three-kilometer line on the highway that the OPP had to be sent to because folks are so interested in looking at the fall colors using that trail. So there are certainly, with these proposed land selections, there are considerations that we're mindful of as we move through the public consultation process. There are a few new small sites. So there's a small site at Lake Clear, identified primarily to provide access and a jumping-off point to the islands in Lake Clear that were proposed for transfer. There's a new site at Blackfish Bay. This was a historic land selection that the Algonquins had identified in the early stages of negotiations, in fact, in 2010, and was originally excluded largely because of concerns around lake capacity. But because we now know that through the Agreement in Principle, the Algonquins have agreed to have their land subject to municipal planning designation jurisdiction. Where there are lakes that are at capacity, the Algonquins have agreed they need to comply with the municipal planning direction. There is a new site at Camp Edel. This location is within Bonnershire Provincial Park, Bonnershire River Provincial Park. It's a site that has historically been very significant to the community and one that was also identified in the early stages of negotiation. And Ontario has followed up with our colleagues at Ontario Parks, and there was an agreement on behalf of Parks to deregulate a portion of that park for this particular site. In terms of some of the reductions, and I have to, there's a, there is an error, and it's totally mine. 129M on this list is actually, remains on the package. We had a late change that came in, a request from one of the Algonquin communities to keep that site. So that site, which is your third bullet down, should actually not be included on the reductions or removals. We do have, though, within the Renfrew County area, there are a few sites that, as a result of our better understanding of ministry program needs, for example, the picnic site, MTO picnic site at Munt's Bay. Ontario has determined that we continue to use that site and we need that site. So we've asked for that to be removed from the package. There are, the patrol yard that's just off of Highway 60 at Killaloo is another example of a parcel that was previously identified as being available for disposition. And at this point in time, we were advised by the Ministry of Transportation that they actually do require those lands. So it's been a bit of a balancing act and trading off where we know that there have been interests to see sites be modified because of either program needs. And at the same time, the Algonquins are looking at the broader landscape and trying to identify, excuse me, for the purposes of moving forward as a nation, the lands that will facilitate and meet most of their needs. Slide six, please. So in terms of our approach to consultation, we do have, for the purposes of our environmental assessment process, we actually have a declaration order. So the Algonquin Land Claim Declaration Order prescribes how we have to undertake consultation with parties. And in this case, the declaration order prescribes that we need to talk to folks who may be affected by the proposed transfer of the settlement lands and the boundary amendments associated with the provincial park additions. So there's two pieces which we're using and approaching the consultation in that way. In terms of looking at the environmental factors, so in 2017, when we released the draft environmental evaluation report for public consultation, we looked at what the impacts of these proposed settlement lands and the transfer of those lands to the Algonquins would have on folks who have either legal interests on those lands or folks who, you know, certainly just are, you know, residents in the area, maybe adjacent to particular lands. And we're required under the Environmental Assessment Act to look at both the impact to the cultural environment, but also the natural environment. And the other important point is that in terms of the process we've undertaken for consultation is we're trying to align the direction from the Planning Act in terms of how we would undertake outreach and the establishment of official plan designations and zoning. So we heard in the early days of the negotiations, there was a concern about capacity from municipalities with respect to the settlement land parcels and undertaking to do that work. So through the negotiation process, Ontario has undertaken to do the municipal planning analysis and to provide proposed recommended designations for each of the settlement land parcels. And unfortunately, our colleague Cara, who's been our lead on municipal planning, was unable to participate today. But she did indicate that if you have particular questions around the alignment of those two processes, we would be happy to take them, and she would be happy to follow up. In terms of the process for provincial parks, so again, under the declaration order, we are aligning that process with our current public consultation that Doug referenced. In addition, there are changes to hunting regulations under the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Act that will take effect with those protected areas. So in terms of the public and Aboriginal consultation that we're undertaking, this is scoped to the most recent consultation. So in July, we provided a 45-day mail-out to all affected legal interest holders and landowners within 120 meters of negotiated adjustments. So the focus in July was looking at reaching out to people who hadn't heard from us before, where there were changes to the lands package. At the same time, we also provide notice to folks who were no longer affected. So where we had sites removed, we wanted to make sure that those individuals who previously would have been contacted by Ontario, we notified them that they were no longer being affected by proposed settlement lands. The process that we are undertaking right now is we're in step two of our consultation. And on Monday, we started our 45-day broad public notice. So this provides notice to everybody who may have an interest in the proposed settlement lands and with respect to the boundary amendments for the protected area additions. There's two sort of consultation streams that are happening right now. One is for the proposed settlement lands, and the other is for the protected area additions. And then stage three, we're hoping, likely in early January, February, we are required to prepare a final environmental evaluation report for the lands package, and we would be releasing that for final notice for 30-day period. So I'm gonna speak to the municipal engagement approach. But like I mentioned, Cara has been our lead, and I hope that I can do it justice. But if you do have additional questions- But if you do have additional questions, she's happy to field those. So as I mentioned, Ontario is responsible for integrating the settlement lands into the fee simple lot fabric across the settlement area. So what she's been doing, Cara and, and our predecessors in this role, have been working with the municipal planning documents for each of the municipalities and looking at what designations are currently in place. As part of that analysis, she's been sitting down with a number of your technical staff and having meetings, and I've been fortunate to participate in a few of those meetings to, to determine whether or not, you know, her assessment and analysis of those designations and zoning are consistent with what the municipality would put in place. So we enter, we know that, you know, planning designation, zoning, those local planning documents do change over time. And the expectation is that we're not, we're not setting out the zoning and designation in stone for each of the settlement lands right now. What we've discussed with the Algonquins is that we would be providing proposed land use designations and zoning, recognizing that as we move forward with the treaty, up to the time of implementation of the treaty, there will likely be changes and modifications that will need to be made to that, that direction. And so we, we vision, envision this as an iterative process where we're working with the municipalities to ensure that, that the designations and zoning, which do take effect when the lands are transferred, will conform to those local planning schedules and policies. Next slide. So in terms of the next steps, what we are looking at doing, and I don't know Doug, if you want to speak to these pieces, because I know you, you mentioned a few of them, but we are looking at staging the negotiations. And that, you know, early in 2021, we're hoping to conclude our environmental assessment process. We are continuing to consult with Aboriginal communities who do or may have overlapping rights within the settlement area, including partnering with, with Canada to engage other communities, because of course, Canada is a key participant and has a key role in Aboriginal consultation for the treaty itself. In terms of engagement to negotiate agreements with legal interest holders. So as I mentioned, there are folks who do have interests on Crown lands. In some cases, for example, we have Hydro One Networks Inc., where there are transmission and distribution lines that cross settlement lands. Ontario has to engage those legal interest holders and work with them to negotiate agreements on those Crown lands that are proposed for transfer. In 2022, we're focusing on preparing for implementation. One of the things that we have heard in our municipal engagement to date have been really good questions about the land transfer schedule and how Ontario intends to keep municipalities apprised of the land transfer schedule that we negotiate as part of implementation. Because of course, particularly for some of the small rural municipalities, it will be important for them to, to know, you know, when these particular settlement lands are going to be transferred, when they're going to come online within municipalities for tax assessment purposes, for example. So that's one of the things that in 2022, we anticipate as we negotiate those, that land transfer schedule, that we'll be working with municipalities so that essentially it's a no surprises environment. We don't want particular municipalities to, you know, all of a sudden be informed that those lands are going to be transferred, you know, within the next three months. And then in 2023, as Doug mentioned, the hope is to conclude negotiations and then each of the three parties to the negotiation would be undertaking our respective approval process. And I think that's it. Thank you very much for your time. And I know it's a lot of information to digest. So we're happy to take questions now, can also take them away.
All right. Thank you very much, Jennifer. It is an incredible amount of information, but it's, it's very detailed and absolutely very informative. And I do appreciate it, as I'm sure all members of council do. Does anyone have questions with Jennifer? Counselor Emo, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the information. Are we able to share these slides with our local councils? I noticed on the bottom it said, private or confidential and only for negotiation. So I'm just, you know, I don't think I can do it justice at my council just to explain the next steps and some of the parcels that have been moved in and out without, without this documentation.
Right. We, we appreciate that sensitivity. And I know that certainly the councils have been asking for this type of information. At this time, we were concerned about making sure that county council was aware. I personally don't have a problem with sharing with the councils. I think most of this information, at least with respect to the particular settlement lands, because we're in phase two of the consultation process now, the public can access this information. And I think that if this is going to assist in explaining, then I'm okay with it. But I defer to Doug as our chief negotiator.
Doug, you can answer, but people need to understand that this is actually a open council meeting. So everything that's been discussed and viewed today is now a public record. So Doug, did you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, Norm. Yeah, I guess I, I would add that, you know, these slides were prepared for county council and the members. And we, we would understand if it's important that you'd be able to share them to local councillors. But I would just, just say that this was not prepared as a document for the general public. It doesn't have a lot of the information that might help all, say, non-professionals understand some aspects of the negotiation. It was geared to council members. So if council members would keep that in mind as they share, as they need to with their local councils.
All right. Thank you very much for that. I, I do know that we consistently have members of the public that tune in to watch our county council meetings. So there are members of the public today doing just that, as is our Director of Public Works and Engineering, Lee Perkins, who I believe is in Newfoundland at this time, but apparently just had to watch the best YouTube video going. I'm sure we're going to go viral shortly. Counselor Donahue, did you have a comment?
A couple. Thank you, Madam Warden. And you had said what was on my mind. Ultimately, there are 13 watching now. This is in the public domain. So I'm certainly sensitive to Mr. Carr's comments that essentially this is not curated, though the presentation that was given this morning in its entirety is, is livestreamed, but it's also going to be available for, for streaming in the future. But it certainly is curated in the same fashion that it has been this morning. I think that is useful. A couple of questions. One was technical. Perhaps if, if someone from the delegation could provide, Jennifer mentioned Cara twice as being essentially the municipal liaison or engagement person. If that, the coordinates could be provided. The other one just kind of jumped into my head. The, the lands or much of the lands, particularly as it pertains to municipalities, are to be transferred in fee simple and then subject to planning, zoning, et cetera. Is, with respect to the two components, of course, for, for property taxation, our assessed value and taxation rate. And of course, we set the taxation rate within our own municipalities. Will all of the lands once transferred then fall into the current value assessment, the, the impact process, if you will, of, of assessment?
That is a good question.
Okay, Jennifer. No, sorry. I, I don't see you, so I wasn't sure who was going to answer, but go right ahead, Jennifer.
Sorry. Yes, I have to turn my video off because my internet is definitely not reliable, even though I live in the city of Peterborough. So my apologies. So our expectation is certainly that the current value assessment process will apply once the lands are transferred in fee simple. There are a suite of lands that have been identified, three key parcels. The nation parks, which at this point in time, Ontario has agreed to a limited tax exemption, where the purpose of those lands are largely for historic and cultural use. And the recognition is that if there is use of those lands, then the local service, service agreements and taxation would apply. But for the bulk of the majority of the lands that are going in fee simple, yes, they will be subject to the current value assessment process. We do know that the Algonquins have asked, certainly are interested in understanding sort of what, what the potential tax burden will be. And they may be undertaking, of course, some of that analysis as they look to negotiate the land transfer schedule.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Counselor Emo, please.
Again, thank you. This is a, I'm always being sort of curious about the status of this one parcel of land. And Mayor Hunt's very familiar with it. Counselor Hunt, it's the, the land known as Cherry Park on Highway 508 in, in Greater Matawaska, more specifically Baggett Township. And at present, it's sort of on a loan agreement to the county, which in turn has flipped it over to Greater Matawaska. And it's used as a public park rest area. It's about an acre and a quarter. And so it's, it's very heavily used by the traveling public. It's a good spot to launch some kayaks and canoes and go down river on the Matawaska or just under some Habachi style barbecues and people. You see lots of families in there from May until October. And, you know, I believe the county invested new washrooms, I'm going to say about eight years ago, maybe nine years ago. So I'm a little concerned that maybe that's not protected. And, and you know, suddenly that one, and I think might be two acre parcel now that I think heard or about it. Suddenly there might be three building lots on at some point in the future and it's lost to the public domain. So are there other parcels like that and are those protected through the agreement? Or is there an opportunity to, for the province to take those back and protect them similar to what you've done with, with Lake St. Peter? And I believe it was Proch Lake, that's something we talked about. So could I get a little clarity on that, please?
So it's a good question. I'm just trying to get confirmation. What township did you identify? Sorry.
It's in Baggett Township, which is part of the township of Greater Matawaska, on the Matawaska River, on Highway, County Road 508, approximately seven kilometers west of Burnstown, this intersection of Burnstown. So between Burnstown and Calabogie. That's as specific as I can get.
Fair enough. So I know that in the context of the discussions that we've had with the Algonquins around the future use of those sites, there are certainly interests in having partnerships with the local municipalities where they have shared interests. So I can follow up. I'm just not sure, because I know there've been discussions with the Algonquins. I want to follow up with them before I give you a complete answer. But certainly in the context of the negotiations as we've been moving forward, we've been mindful of those potential, the interface between folks who are existing users of the lands and folks who have an interest in seeing that, that use continue as they go forward. So Frontenac is a good example, where Frontenac currently has a land use permit for a number of Crown land camping sites, which are within the proposed White Duck Provincial Park and have expressed a keen interest in working with the Algonquins to understand with Ontario what the potential future use of those lands may be and what opportunity they may have for partnerships and economic development going forward. But I will commit to, to take a look at the details on that one, because I do know that the Algonquins have indicated, in some cases, they've had those discussions with municipalities, but I don't know the specific details of that particular one. So we will follow up and I'm just, do you want me to follow up directly?
Well, if I might, I think it's because of the, the ownership question and I'm not inferring anything towards negotiations, because it's been, to my understanding and recollection, was downloaded to the county and the county then in turn has formed a relationship with Greater Matawaska to maintain it and look after it, cut the grass, empty the garbage cans, police it, whatever. And so I, I think it's probably best to have that conversation with the county. And I would also suggest that Mr. Perkins in Newfoundland and Mr. Bolduc and possibly Mr. Kelly might also scour our archives to get more information on the other parcels that may be owned, wrong, wrong use of the word, by the county at this time through provincial download, because I have the impression there might be a couple parcels, but I know about this one specifically.
Okay. I think that's an excellent idea. And Jennifer, you're hearing a lot of history from Counselor Emo, who's been here for a while. So what some of us newcomers don't know, he has extensive background knowledge on. So that would be an excellent suggestion for us to certainly know what parcels, if any, are being or have potential to be impacted on the, during the negotiations. Counselor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to Jennifer. I was very pleased to see that the Constant Lake parcel had been removed and now you're saying that it's not. This particular piece of land is problematic because it is landlocked and we wouldn't be able to offer emergency services. Are the Algonquins aware of this, this issue or challenge?
Yes, they are. So we, we have indicated to them in the course of the negotiations, because of the landlocked nature, that access to servicing is, is going to be hugely problematic unless they can negotiate some form of a relationship with the, the property owner that's adjacent, that has the road access.
Ah, okay. Thank you for that.
I'm sorry. Oh, Mike. Counselor Donahue, please. You're taking after me. I have to unmute yourself, please.
Double clicked. I wonder if, if I might ask, are the mapping, or have the maps for the potential land claim areas been updated to incorporate the new information with respect to the changes or proposed revisions?
Yes, they have. So the, all the maps were uploaded yesterday through Ontario.ca. So if folks click on that link, they can get a link to, to the maps and, and focus in. You can download the particular maps on a parcel by parcel basis or take a look at the regional maps that are also available.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Any other comments or questions with Jennifer? Counselor Emo.
Yes, I would suggest to Jennifer that she complained to Jay Marie Jones about her internet connection. That's all I can offer you and to Doug as well.
Appreciate that. I can't even see it on my kids using all the wifi bandwidth because they're at school.
Excellent. Counselor Sweet, please. You'll have to turn on your mic, please, sir. There you go.
Okay. There's a, given the fact that this is an open meeting, there is some sensitivity about some land in the town of Perahuawa. Is it possible to get contact information that I could talk to either Norm or Jennifer or with regards to that? So that, I don't want to go public with this particular situation, but it, any clarity on this particular situation as far as a certain portion of land that's within the town of Perahuawa? Could I have that information, please?
Sure. I can follow up with you, with you offline, Bob, if that's helpful.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. As I say, it's, it's, it's a little sensitive, this particular situation. And I don't want to bring it out in this open forum. Thank you for that.
Okay. Any other questions for Jennifer? Seeing none? Who's next in your group or have we concluded the presentation, Norm? Okay. Can you turn on your mic, please, sir?
Thank you very much. And thank you for the reminder to turn the mic on again. Really do appreciate the time of county council. And as has been the commitment of Ontario throughout the process to engage municipalities to the extent possible in negotiations. And as you're, can appreciate, there's always that fine line of what can be made public and what can't. And we, we enjoy the relationship with all the municipalities in the land claim area. And of course, Renfrew County is, is very much in the heart of, of the, the land claim area. So it's very meaningful and very, very much appreciated that we can share the information with county council because we know that you obviously get questions from your local constituents. And it's important that you be made aware of as much of the detail as, as we can possibly give you. So we will continue that. And again, we thank you for your, your time and your participation. It's very much appreciated.
Well, thank you very much, Norm. And the slide deck is invaluable to us. I'm sure that we will be going over it again now that Doug and Jennifer have gone through it and elaborate in some areas. And I think that we'll And I think that we'll make sure that all of County Council members do have the contact information for yourself and your group, should anyone want to reach out and have further questions or clarification done. And now I look forward to seeing you hopefully around this time in 2021.
Thank you.
Take care, and thank you very much, everyone. It was an excellent presentation. So we'll go back to our agenda. Correspondence, Mr. Morrow? Oh, I caught him off guard.
Thank you, Warden. All correspondence has been dealt with. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So we're just a little over an hour into our meeting, and we will be starting our committee report. So I'm going to give everyone a 10-minute break, and then we'll start back and hopefully be able to move through our committee reports nice and smoothly until at least noon. So we will reconvene at, let's say, I'll give you nine minutes, at 10:15. Thanks very much.
Item number six, Rentford County employment data, which is in the document right below. Item number seven is Ottawa Valley Tourism Awards. It's a reminder that nominations are now open for the 2020 Ottawa Valley Tourism Awards. And item number eight is the Winter Intake Starter Company Plus, the next intake of entrepreneurs for the Starter Company Program, opened on October 15, 2020. Item number nine is a video on one of our county foresters. And I'm going to ask Craig to say a few words about Miss Lacey Rose, and then Sean will play us the video. Craig?
Thank you, Chair Hunt, through the Warden and through the chair. So as you know, Lacey Rose is an exceptional staff member that has been approached by a company, and the story we'll tell it a little bit, to do some little work on her free time during her holiday time. So this video is very indicative of what she's been doing for the last couple of years and champions the county quite a bit. And I think it's worth showing to, as we're showing the committee, again, worth showing the County Council. So with that, Mr. Benkey, please.
All over the world, society keeps on running, thanks to mighty machines and their operators. Join us as we look back on our adventures so far. This is Mighty Jobs, powered by Volvo Penta.
Could we get Sean to share his screen?
So, welcome to my mighty job. When I'm not hosting this series, I'm a forester for the County of Renfrew. That means that I am out here collecting data in the forest, marking trees for harvest, looking for and protecting wildlife values, supervising logging operations, and basically making sure that forests grow back when we're done. My favorite part is when I get to talk to people about what forestry is. I did a little bit of this in a video for a local film producer several years ago. Then one day, I got a message from someone in Sweden asking if I would be interested in hosting a web series about heavy equipment engines. I thought that was pretty weird. But after a lot of research and some video chats, off I went to Sweden to get to work on the first episode. Now, more than two years and eight episodes later, I'm so grateful for the adventures we've had. Everything from hanging out in a top-secret underground mine in Finland to crushing five-million-year-old rocks in Northern Ireland. So what happens if it's too big?
Well, we'll see in a minute if it's too big.
To driving a pilot boat in the Norwegian Sea. It's been so incredible meeting all of the operators and seeing their skills in action. Some of them even have secret talents. I really enjoyed visiting the forest in Sweden, being in my natural habitat and talking forestry with friends. He was the first one brave enough to let me try his machine. But after that, I got to try my hand at all the equipment. Some were so bad that it did not make the video. I'm so qualified. But the worst has got to be when I rammed the sugarcane harvester into the ground in India. Oh, we're really stuck now. Now I've done it. I'm not the only one who's messed up, though. I'll never let our cameraman Jonathan forget the time when we were in Atlanta, about to shoot a big fire drill at the world's busiest airport. The fire was burning, the firefighters were ready, and he forgot the memory card. When he was rushing to get it, the fire actually got so big that the firefighters really had to struggle to put it out and almost ran out of water. It made for some really good footage, though. So, well done, Jonathan. One of the best parts of this experience has really been what goes on behind the scenes. We're a small crew that go on these adventures together, and we've become like this weird little family that I really look forward to seeing. When we were in Northern Ireland and we got to the inn we were staying at, the power was out in the whole community. But that actually ended up being one of the highlights of the trip, because we hung out around the fireplace with some really nice Irish brothers who were playing music. It made me feel like I was at home in Newfoundland. Speaking of power outages, it was incredible to meet Generator Jimmy at Sweden Rock, whose job is to make sure that doesn't happen. I still can't believe the access that we got there. It was really cool to see behind the scenes at a music festival like that, and they let us go on stage. Being in front of 30,000 people is not something I ever saw myself doing.
Hey, DC!
Hey, DC!
Sweden Rock! The common theme in all these adventures has been the amazing people and machines doing vital and sometimes overlooked jobs in our society. Miners, harbor workers, harvesters, skippers, they keep our world spinning. Thanks so much for hanging out with me today. I can't wait to see where we'll find ourselves next time. Until then, thanks for watching.
So if I could just add, Warden and Chair, it's always exciting for our staff who deliver these projects on the side that get their creative juices flowing and feed that energy that when they come back, they definitely provide their full time and attention to their jobs. Especially Lacey was out in the snow and cold yesterday and in the warmth and sun on Friday. So again, kudos to Lacey for taking us on and finding time in her busy schedule to put it in. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. I've seen it a number of times, and I smile ear to ear every time. She's just fantastic. Councillor Emo.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to relate, just pass on a story. I was in Toronto late last year at a function, a reception at the University of Toronto, and the Swedish ambassador was there, as was several members of their forestry industry. And Lacey, to my great chagrin, was more well-known than myself or Warden Murphy at the time and probably better received. So her fame is worldwide and is international, and they were quite complimentary about her. And I think at the same time, it also stimulated their interest in Renfrew County. So this is one of those value-added things for us where her successes and access to different media and markets certainly translates to increased access for us. So kudos to her and by extension to the County of Renfrew. And I think it speaks well of your leadership and Warden Murphy's leadership, as well as the director and the CEO, that she's allowed to be creative and other members of our employee group are allowed to be creative and contribute. So this is a bit of a good news story for everybody at many levels.
Thank you very much for those comments. We may as well, any other comments while we're on the video? Councillor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And I'm not sure if I'm having technology problems like councillor Hunt is. I couldn't open the link on my iPad to this video. Is there any way we could have the link emailed to us?
I'm sure that can be arranged.
Thank you.
Any other further comments on the video? Seeing none, I'll turn the committee report back over to councillor Hunt, please.
Thank you. So we'll move to item 10. It's the 2020 Harvest Update on County Forest. So the information is presented below. And item 11 is the Service Delivery Improvement Project. And I'm going to ask Mr. Kelly to take this item.
Thank you, Chair, and again, through you and Warden to council. So I'm just referring to my, to the notes on the committee. Where we're at is actually quite exciting. Over the last week or two, we've made significant progress on the building renovations. Carpet is being laid down, final touches being put on paint. Lines are going up, and furniture is being rearranged to go back in. So over the course of the next two weeks, we are seeing the public works in engineering, furniture and desks, that is furniture, moving into their offices and getting them ready for operation as soon as possible because without a desk in their current location, obviously, they can't continue with their operations. So that will happen over the next week or two. The health unit is busy moving out today and the rest of this week, which will provide us an opportunity to start renovating that space as of Monday and getting a good look at that, moving some of our hoarding facilities or storage facility of our materials into that area that will allow us to move the development property furniture back in, starting next Monday, Tuesday, and then the new workstations and furniture that we purchased going into that space in the common areas beginning next Wednesday, I believe, next Wednesday, Thursday. So all that to say, we're getting closer to having an operational space, once again, for the majority of our staff members. The building is still closed. The reception area is due to begin, due to continue at least, some of its renovations later this week and early next week, meaning about a month-long process. So in terms of operational needs of getting this building back open to the public, should that be warranted and ready, will be on or around December 1st. So part of the SDE, of course, and by extension of the pandemic, Mr. Beakley and his small team is working quite heavily on getting our standard operating procedures in place so that when staff, when more staff has moved back into the building, they have the right pieces in place to handle the pandemic and working together. So all that to say again, that we're working towards a solution, moving people back in when necessary later this year and early in 2021. I think that handles that for the most part, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Craig. So item number 12 is Community Benefits Charge Regulation under the Planning Act, and that information you'll find on page 30. And that is the report, all of which is submitted by our Chair, Robert Sweet, and committee members, Emo Hunt, Keller Lynch, Reinwald Robinson, and TJ. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hunt. Welcome back to the beginning of your report. Any questions under information item number one? Two. Councillor Brows, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. And just a little follow-up. I know that this email came to our council on opposition to the 5G cell towers. And I just wanted to make county aware of it. And I also want to thank county for the Eeyorn presentation so that there's quite a bit of information in regards to the questions that have been raised about the safety of the 5G towers. So certainly appreciate getting that information. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Councillor Emo.
Thank you. I suspect by the end of the month, there will also be something, sorry, the end of next month, that we, something coming from Roma as well. As councillor Love knows, there is a toolkit coming with more information. So I think between the two documents, it'll allow members of municipal councils to have a ready source of information to base their decisions on rather than perhaps well-intentioned, quick messages with maybe flawed or limited documents.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Emo, and especially your comment that, you know, this is something we'll have to go to the individual municipalities as well. Mr. Morrow, please.
Thank you, Warden, through you to county council. For council's information, I did have a call with Lisa Severnson of Eeyorn yesterday morning. Lisa did want me to encourage members of council to provide feedback on the preliminary document that they had pulled together. And I believe she was going to reach out to a couple other members of council just to touch base, to make sure that is exactly what they were looking for. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Councillor Emo.
Yes, thank you. I should have mentioned that. I was copied with the documents. So I've started going through, I'm almost all the way through all the links just to make sure that they make sense and they're readable and have relevant information. So, and I understand that she's done that with other folks. So I will get my stuff back in probably by tomorrow to her. And I suspect they're thinking of getting it out in the middle of next month as well. So it'll be a very useful document.
Any other comments? Councillor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And thanks to Mayor Brows. I know that there's been a lot of opposition in our municipality as well. I'm just wondering if over the next month, through SpaceX and Starlink, this might actually be a moot point. They're deploying satellites virtually once a week, and a lot of them are over our area. So just a note to council.
Thanks for sharing that, councillor Murphy. Any other comments on item number two, the 5G towers? Seeing none, item number three, the Ogonkun Land Claim update. It was a very fulsome report today, and I know all of us must have appreciated. I certainly appreciated knowing what's happening and looking forward to next year. Any comments? Seeing none. Item number five, business closures in non-metro Ontario. Six, Renfrew County employment data. Councillor Emo, please.
Sorry, I promised to shut up soon. I just got contacted by the University of Guelph about businesses in rural Ontario. So I have a Zoom call with them. They're doing some kind of research project, so I'll know more and be able to share after Friday. And it may involve me reaching out to all of our local municipalities to get a survey or some information out to your public. So if you get a lengthy email that's full of academic phrases I don't understand, I'll certainly be able to refer you to somebody else. But just to let you know, that's coming. And I just got the email yesterday and had a quick exchange this morning. So I'll know more in the next little while.
Thank you for that. Councillor Murphy, please.
Thank you. You know what? This totally went out of my brain until councillor Emo said so. I actually got an email with a survey from, sorry, a master's student at Waterloo asking about Murphy's auto in Renfrew. So Peter, I expect that other businesses in Renfrew might have also been asked by this person. She was doing sector over sector, so maybe, you know, one garage, one hair salon, that kind of thing. But it's amazing to me that, you know, since March, this is now her master's thesis. That's how quickly things are moving. It's quite incredible.
Certainly, I think also worth noting is the Eastern Ontario Leadership Council and the Limestone Analytics that are keeping track of what's happening in Eastern Ontario. They did a presentation at the Ontario East Conference. There's, you know, you can go on their site, you can get all the information, you can really drill down. So it's certainly worthwhile for anyone who's interested in seeing what's happening and some trends that may be rather disturbing. And again, you know, we did have the Economic Recovery Task Force operating for a while to assist our business community. It's something that I know Craig is keeping a close tab on as far as what's happening within the county so that hopefully we have an opportunity to assist our businesses in all sectors to continue to at least maintain and hopefully grow as a result of being able to make it through this horrendous pandemic. Councillor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. If I may, yes, I think that task force is extremely important, especially for those businesses that did not qualify for any of the federal benefits. I know personally, we didn't, we couldn't apply for anything. And I think that we have to keep that in our minds, that the parameters behind, oh, my internet's unstable. The parameters behind some of these programs didn't allow for some of our businesses to qualify. And so I think that task force to shine a light on those kinds of things is extremely important at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morrow, did you have something you wanted to say?
Thank you, Warden. I will defer to Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly, please.
Okay, thanks, Paul. I just wanted to bring you up to speed. Based on the conversation, our economic development staff is reaching out on our own report card, if you will, from a number of local businesses. So while I appreciate that Guelph and Waterloo are doing their own research and students are doing that, this will be our data, and we'll be able to get a real feel on a local level what funding the people are absent with or don't have access to, I should say, and what they could require in the future. So we did a survey to kick off the task force way back in April. So this will be the fall report card, so more to come.
Thank you. And Mr. Morrow does want to speak after all.
Thank you for that, Warden. I appreciate it. Through you, Warden, to council, I just wanted to ask that as our elected officials become informed or aware of the different initiatives, if we could just keep Craig's shop informed. And I know they find that information very valuable to know what's going on. And that way, I think if we can collect that data and be aware, we can use it to build our case when we need to address issues that are specific to Renfrew County. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Councillor Emo, please.
Thank you. I suspect I was contacted because councillor Love and myself have been very vocal at Roma. And then again, the Rural Caucus at EMO about the needs of rural Ontario being very different than the larger centers. And our opinion, and I think I'll broadly say ours, our opinion has been that it's a greater impact in our smaller communities because a lot of our businesses are one or two people or three people. They might be the only one in their area, and they do not too badly. If they disappear, then we're going to have to export services and the services provided by those businesses from a greater area, and it'll drive the costs up. So we've been, that's sort of been our broad, loosely-defined thesis in our presentation, verbal presentation. So I suspect they've gotten sick of hearing that and have tried to link me to other bodies, starting with the University of Guelph Rural Studies Department. But we'll keep you posted on it.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, please.
Sorry, just one last point I should have mentioned. And Alistair made this point, I believe, at committee. While there is doom and there is some gloom across Ontario and across the world, I think it's worthy of note that several people, several very energetic entrepreneurs have open businesses in many of our communities. There's new pizza places in Cumbermere, there's new coffee shops in downtown Renfrew. They have reached out and they've actually opened up storefronts. So the entrepreneurship and the vibe of the Ottawa Valley is still quite alive. And I would just suggest, like I always would, when you can, support these small businesses. It will be heading into a darkish winter, and they're all worthy of our support. So thank you, Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. If that's good for number six. Number seven, Ottawa Valley Tourism Awards. Number eight, the Winter Intake Starter Company Plus. Again, just in relation to what Mr. Kelly was saying, I believe there was a, I want to say six, but I may be wrong on the number, of new starter entrepreneurs this past summer, which is absolutely incredible. And we wish them much, much success. Number nine, Lacey and her video. Councillor Lynch, please.
Thank you, Warden, to Director Kelly. Is it possible, once we get back into the council chambers, that we could introduce Lacey to us personally and have an update to where she's going with this?
Absolutely, through you, Warden, absolutely. I mean, she should be around in the winter. Let's hope we get back in the winter, Councillor Lynch.
Well, if not, you know, we could always bring her on virtually. She's a dynamic young woman, that's for sure. Item number 10, the 2020 Harvest Update on County Forest. 11, the Service Delivery Improvement Project. 12, Community Benefits Charge. Report as a whole. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Hunt? Could you turn on your mic, please, sir?
Very, so moved.
Thank you. All in favor? Report is presented. Carried. Thank you very much. Next up will be councillor Brows, Chair of Social Services.
Thank you, Madam Warden. We, your Social Service Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number, information item number one is the Rent Cafe Community Housing. The stats are attached. Item number two is the Ontario Works Case Load Statistics. Item three is the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit. And this is a new funding program jointly between the federal and provincial governments. And basically, it's to help municipalities reduce the waitlist for people getting, or waiting to get into low-income or rental assistance. And anybody who is eligible for this benefit and agrees to remove their name from the waitlist have an opportunity through this benefit to get subsidized rent. have an opportunity through this benefit to get subsidized rent anywhere in the province of Ontario. So it's portable, they can take it with them. And it's available for up to nine years. Item number four is the Rentfrew County Housing Corporation Annual Maximum Percentage Increase. Basically, the, just the recommendation or resolution that the increases proposed for 2021 will be frozen at 2020 levels. Item number five is the Ontario Works Funding Allocation, and it remains the same for 2021 as for 2020. Item six is the Improving Supportive Housing in Ontario. And the, basically correspondence is attached in the, in the report. Item seven is the Social Assistance Recovery and Renewal Update. And that plan is also identified in that report. I did want to add, though, I did have some very, very good news from Laura early in the week where the business case that the Social Services Department presented to the province as in regards to the second stage funding, that has been approved for the county. And I will ask if Laura could just confirm whether or not we got the full, I believe it was 1.2 million or a portion of, if Laura's available, maybe she could just give us that, that confirmation.
Laura, if you don't mind, please.
Thank you. Through you, Warden, to members of County Council, we're very pleased as well to receive the letter that confirms that the total allocation that we could apply for has been awarded to the County of Renfrew. The letter indicates that funding will flow 75% and then a holdback. So we're awaiting the actual funding, which we should be receiving shortly. The letter was just received to Warden Murphy, sorry, Warden Robinson, my apologies. And the, the letter outlines that the, the full amount has been awarded to the County of Renfrew. Excellent work by the staff in Social Services to get the business case to be so compelling that the ministry felt that it was absolutely important to fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I believe the turnaround time from beginning to end to prepare that business case is also extremely short. So congratulations to you and your staff, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Bros, would you like to continue?
Yes, thank you. And I would echo the, those comments that it was the leadership team in Social Services, as well as the staff, that basically dropped everything that they were doing in order to put together this business case, which I believe it was two weeks or less time that they had to do it. So yes, thank you very much. Item number eight is the Childcare and Early On Agreement Extension. This is also good news that this money is now available till March 31st, 2021. And just also for County Council's information, one of the challenges that, that Judy and her team is having is that even though this money is available, some of our childcare providers have had difficulty actually maintaining the spaces that they had prior to COVID because of the extra cleaning and safety requirements and the fact that they're having difficulty recruiting enough staff to, to be able to provide the same service and programs. Item number nine is the 2020 Licensed Childcare Data Profiles. And that brings us to item 10, Resolutions. So item 10 is the 2020 Contract with QP Local 4425, Resolution Number SSCC 20-10-43. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approves a one-year, January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2021 collective agreement between QP Local 4425 and Renfrew County Housing Corporation, which has, which was ratified by the QP membership on September 29th, 2020. I stand, I need to correct myself. I said December 31st, 2021. It should be December 31st, 2020. The background, contract negotiations with QP Local 4425 began in July 2020. The last agreement was a three-year contract beginning January 1st, 2016 and expired on December 31st, 2019. Bargaining between the Renfrew County Housing Corporation and representatives of QP Local 4425 was held on September 22nd, 2020 and was completed on the same day. The new contract was ratified by QP Local 4425 on September 29th, 2020. And at this point, if you would allow, Madam Warden, I'd like to add that at committee, there was two additional paragraphs that aren't included in the background on the County Council report. The first paragraph just stated that it consists of a pay increase of 1.5% for 2020 and an adjustment to work boot and uniform allowance. There's also been a change to the parental and pregnancy leave article and some wording changes in other articles. In the final paragraph, we are pleased with the process, which took place virtually over Zoom. This is the first time doing contract negotiations in this manner, and it was successful. Resolution, or business case, item number 11, for Ontario Works Supervisor, Resolution Number SSCC 20-10-44. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approved the business case for a five-month contract Ontario Works Supervisor position in Group Eight, 74,172 to 87,260 of Employment Bylaw Number One, Non-Union Staff Salary Grid. The background there is attached. And under bylaws, item number 12, County of Renfrew, Ontario Works Policies and Procedures, Resolution Number SSCC 20-10-45, Moved by Chair, Seconded by Committee, at the Ontario Works Policy OW1, Internal Control Measures and Process for Ontario Works Payments and Policy OW2, Funerals Be Approved, and that a bylaw to establish corporate policies and procedures for Ontario Works Services for the County of Renfrew be passed at this session of County Council. Once again, the background there is attached. All of that, which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members, Grills, Love, Regir, Rainwald, and Robinson. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Bros. We'll go to the beginning of the report. Any questions under item number one? Two? Three? Four? Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a point of clarity, I'm certainly pleased that the recognition of, of the impact of COVID-19 has been extended by Renfrew County Housing. A point of clarity, if I'm reading this correctly, and perhaps I am not, it seems to suggest that there is a capacity to have a rental increase in X, in a normal year, in excess of the maximum rent increase. Am I reading that incorrectly? Or does that authority reside with the housing corporation for that $10 premium over the maximum?
Counselor Bros, would you like to answer that, or shall we refer to Ms. Lapine?
I'd like to refer that to Ms. Lapine.
Laura, please.
Certainly. Thank you. Through you, Warden, to Counselor Donahue. In the outlined areas and within the larger centers, we, we impose an increase of $10. And that is over and above. So not sure if that answers your questions, your question, but we have normally brought this forward as an additional increase to, to Renfrew County Housing Rent Gear Income Units. We can't do that in 2021 due to the bill that has been passed. But we do have that authority to add to the, the rent increase that it normally takes place. Our rent increases are very nominal. Not sure if that answers your question.
I do appreciate, Madam Warden, Ms. Lapine's answer. It doesn't precisely, I was, it was my understanding that the rent increases across the province are set on an annualized basis and that landlords were not directed to seek necessarily the maximum, but it was capped at a certain amount. And this is suggesting that it is, that $10 premium is available over the maximum rent increase. Now, Ms. Lapine had identified that the rent increases typically are nominal, so presumably they're not the maximum. But the wording of this is suggesting a premium may be charged over the maximum. So if I, if you, perhaps Ms. Lapine could address that.
Through you, Madam Warden, back to Counselor Donahue. Let me get back to you on that, if you don't mind. I'll just do some double checking on that, and I will get the information just to confirm. I, I want to be sure that I'm providing the accurate information to you.
Absolutely. That is what I'm seeking. Thank you very much, Madam Warden.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lapine. Any other questions under item number four? Seeing none. Number five? Six? Seven? Eight? Nine? Resolution number 10? Number 11, the business case? And number 12, bylaws? Counselor Emo, please.
Yes, thank you. Just a, some clarification for me on the, on the funeral policy. I'm glad to see that the amount has gone up. I've heard that a number of times from some of the funeral directors that the previous amount was a bit low. And just, okay, page 59 of your report, item number one, Application for Assistance. I'm a little concerned about it. Number one says to complete the funeral application and determine eligibility for the benefit, the OWA will need to request or obtain the following, blah, 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 birth certificate, social insurance number, health card, original statement of death, invoice, life, life insurance prepaid funeral and, and a copy of the will. So a lot of our population, or some of our population that might have a, need this service, move a lot. And over the years may lose birth certificate or social insurance number or health card, or, or even their will, if they have one. So I'm wondering, is this a check every box, or you, or you're denied? Or is this a shall require or may need? Because I, you know, when I look at some of the population who may access this, they may not be able to get some of that because some people move around, they move away, they work out west, come back, get sick, you know, and stuff gets lost. So I'm a little concerned about that as, as, you know, I think, you know, there might be an unintended bias that would disqualify some people from it. So could I get some clarity on that, please?
Thank you very much, Counselor Emo, for bringing that to our attention. Ms. Lapine, would you like to comment on that, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to Counselor Emo. I will tell you that these items are items that we need to determine eligibility. However, our staff work to obtain these documents, so nobody gets denied without these documents. We have access through our MP, MP's office to fast-track things like access to birth certificates, SIN numbers. And it's due diligence, so the next of kin who's applying on behalf of the deceased will have due diligence to try to locate these items. So for example, we have a conversation with the next of kin. The, the critical documents are more the SIN and the birth certificate, which we have, you know, engaged other services to get those. Things like life insurance policy, access to a will. If the next of kin indicates that they're not aware that there is such a thing in existence, we go with that. They're signing a document that says, to the best of my knowledge, there is no will, or to the best of my knowledge, there is no life insurance policy. And we just ask in advance that if they can bring these in, now during COVID, we do it over the phone. But when we are in non-COVID times, we meet with the next of kin, and if they don't have those, we, we will pursue those. We don't hold up the funeral benefit because of that. We recognize that it's a really tough time for families and that, like you have identified, some people have no access to their fam, their deceased family member's documents, but they have enough information that we can help them pursue the information. But we don't help hold up the benefit or working with them in the funeral home to ensure that the proper process goes on for the family. It's really important for, because it is through the Ontario Works Act and Regulations, it speaks to how funeral benefits and how eligibility is determined. We have to just make sure that the income and assets, to the best of the ability, is, is within the amount that allows us to cover the cost of the funeral. Certainly for anybody who passes away that is on Ontario Works or ODSP, we have that information already available in the system. So it, it's, it's a non hardship issue. It would be more for a non recipient that we would be looking at assisting in finding the birth certificate and social insurance number and other information. I understand those are very few, a couple a year. And we, we work closely with our local MP's office to get the documentation. I hope that answers your question, Counselor Emo.
It does. Thank you. And if I might, Warden, a supplementary?
Absolutely.
Further on page 59, they look under Procedure, and it says, Management must, and it's underlined, approve taking an application after the 10-day limit. So as I understand it, if I were to come in with an application on the 12th day, it's subject to someone signing off on saying, yes, it's okay to take this? Is there, is there, I, I get the reason that, you know, I think I understand you don't want them coming in six or eight months later and, and, and try, and being caught in the middle of the dispute, maybe with the funeral home. But is, is that how I understand that to be, to be written, sort of the, the thought behind that?
Ms. Lapine?
Thank you. Through you, Warden, to Counselor Emo. We work with all of the funeral homes and we have regular communication with them. So as soon as they are contacted by a family and there is an expression of financial need, as long as we have contact by the family or the funeral home, then we, we have no issue. So for example, we often will have the preliminary conversation within the first few days. And the paperwork and, and the process could be a month later. So the extenuating circumstances would be presented to management. And, and really, it, it's, it's very rare. I mean, we have had a couple of cases over the past several years where somebody has come in, they've paid for the funeral. They come in six months later and say, hey, I, I think I can qualify for reimbursement. And, and that's a very different conversation because they have demonstrated the ability to pay. If it's a circumstance that involves anything that is considered, you know, and, and again, it would be up to the family member to explain, you know, I, I didn't get to the funeral home in time, or I didn't get to you in time. Anything reasonable, we work with that. It's, it's, as you had mentioned, to limit, we, we don't go back and pay back somebody for a funeral that they've already paid for. And a funeral home will engage us right away, and they'll hold off the payment until we get our, our work done with the family. So oftentimes, that will be a month later. And the funeral home is, is usually very, they're more interested in ensuring that there is a payment coming, and then they can proceed with the funeral process. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I do know that most funeral homes will not proceed with funeral arrangements unless they have some confirmation that there is a payment. So if, if the family is saying that they can't do it, then the funeral home gets some connected test right away. And that's all they need to get the process started, and that's usually within the 10 days. Now, for some reason, there's, you know, the body's been held up and they can't start a funeral process because of an autopsy or, or anything else. Of course, the 10 days is, is waived.
Thank you, Laura. I saw Counselor Emo nodding, so I think he did get the answer to his question, but he has another one.
Yeah, sorry. And I promise this will be the final one.
That's all right.
Out of, out of community or out of province, sometimes family members, parents are the only, are the only family left for someone who's deceased. Is there, I don't see that mentioned in here as a mechanism? Is that, is that something that would be considered?
Laura, please.
Certainly. Thank you. Through you, Madam Warden, to Counselor Emo. The deceased has to be a resident of Ontario. That is one of the stipulations. So they can come from another part of the province if this is going to be where their final resting place is going to be. So, and that often happens where somebody might live in Timmins, but home is Renfrew County, and, and we will assist with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. Thank you very much, Laura. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just to clarify then, typically the scenarios that Counselor Emo had been discussing through you to, to Ms. Lepine, is that typically what's referred to here as non-SAR? That would be typically outside of the system?
Ms. Lepine, please.
Thank you through you, Madam Warden, to Counselor Donahue. Non-SAR, SAR stands for social assistance recipient. So what happens is if, if the deceased is a social assistance recipient, it's pretty much a, you know, for the most part, those funerals are deemed to be eligible. If they're a non-social assistance recipient, we just have to do an income and asset test, but they are still potentially eligible. If, we do have some people that would qualify to be on Ontario Works or would qualify to be on the Ontario Disability Support Program, but choose not to use those services and their income and assets would definitely qualify them, then we would, they would qualify for a funeral expense through our program. And those are the folks that are referred to as non-SARS or non-social assistance recipients.
And those typically, through you, Madam Warden, typically those would be the, the cases that would take perhaps a more involved application process and follow up.
Through you, Madam Warden, to Counselor Donahue, you are correct. Those do require a little bit more work, but we have not had any cases over the last 20 years where we haven't been able to, to get the information needed. It's often in those cases, there's a family member or it could be an unclaimed body and we have a hospital record. And, you know, that's, that's all we need sometimes because they, they will have information. There's, there's always a way to get the information.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lepine. Any further questions under item number 12? Seeing none, the report as a whole. Counselor Emo, please.
Thank you, Warden. And this is not about the report per se. I'm curious about the announcement on the Rapid Housing Initiative and wondering if the committee can have a report for the next, for next month on it. Because I do note the minister has said they want to have the money spent by March of 2021. As I understand it, there's a billion dollars. And there's 500 million that seemingly has been predetermined. I'm, I'm never quite sure how we predetermined these things because I don't remember getting an email saying drop in and we've got 500 that we're going to spend predetermined. But anyway, I'll let that go. So there's 500 million go on to the large stream. And then I'm not sure if I'm confused about this, but Toronto gets 203 million on top of that. So either there's 500 million for the rest of us or there's only 200 and, or 197 million or whatever the math is for the rest of us. So I'm curious about, about a couple of things, but essentially are we able to access this money? And, and how quickly can we get something out the door if, 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 if we have the ability to access the money? So I apologize for that, but I think the March 2021 deadline indicates a certain amount of speed.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, no, my mic was off. Ms. Lepine, is that something that is on your radar that would be presented to the Social Services Committee soon?
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to Counselor Emo. We are just starting to hear about it as well and we've had no formal announcement. We're waiting for more details, but we're, we're very much watching what's happening and listening. We have the Rapid Housing Initiative and the Home for Good program. And it very well could be that the example that you're explaining with Toronto could be Home for Good. We've applied for Home for Good funding and have not received it in the past, but there's been a lot of pressure over the last year from those CMS or service managers that didn't get the Home for Good funding to be included. So hopefully we have information that we can bring in November. But we are definitely watching and following and we will be on it as soon as we have information. So if it's available for the next committee, absolutely we'll have it. But know that we will keep you fully informed as we learn more.
Thank you. And if, if I might, if anybody can explain how you can get on that pre-consolation concert or the pre-consultation list and get the money before the announcement, I'd be more than happy to hear that. You know, all 13 viewers as well.
Well, we'll wait for people to email us and tell us the, the tricks of the trade there. So I have no doubt that Laura is on top of this, as she always is. And any issues happening concerning social services and the people that social services supports. So thank you for that. Any other comments on the report as a whole? Seeing none, do I have a mover?
Still moved, Madam Warden.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. We will move on now to the Health Committee report and Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. We, your Health Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Information, item number one is the resident population of each of Bonneville Manor and Miramichi Lodge as of September 30th. Item number two is the Champlain Local Health Integration Network Client Waitlist Information that incorporates all nine of the long-term care homes in the county of Brentford. Item three is with respect to the Emergency Services Influenza 2020 Response and the paramedic service has been coordinating countywide for the delivery and distribution administration of, of influenza vaccine. I can add to that, that Dr. Cushman has advised that the influenza vaccines are typically distributed based on previous year's utilization. And that has had some role in, in some of the challenge early on in receiving those. Item number four is the Community Paramedics Sharing of Knowledge and it is certainly very much a laudatory ride-along program that the Northumberland Paramedic Service is following up with the Community Paramedic Program here in Brentford County. Item five is with respect to the Sierra Team Update and multiple calls. And certainly as council is very much aware, given the, the significant travel restrictions that has led to a great deal more travel in the, the wonderful rugged country here that we have in Brentford County. However, it is, it is countryside that sometimes demands more experience and is, is sometimes brought to bear, which has led certainly to an uptick in the Sierra Team. It is outstanding that we here in Brentford County have that as a service for those that are willing to explore our, our natural beauty. Item six is the COVID-19 pandemic update. The homes continue to test residents. The, the long-term care homes themselves are, are doing the testing for the surveillance of staff, which as I understand is by monthly, rather semi-monthly, that is twice a month. Whereas residents are tested on a symptomatic basis and that is done through the, the VTAC. I will add, of course, that the turnaround times of receiving test results is still excessive and that is being worked on. The next item is with respect to various funding envelopes. I believe when I counted these, there were something in excess of 15. I am very much appreciative of the diligent work of both Ms. Shidi and Mr. Foss to stay on top of these in a steadily evolving environment and very thankful certainly for the assistance. The single largest component is the additional emergency prevention and containment. As council is, is acutely aware, I am sure that the single largest impact of COVID-19 in the first wave was visited upon long-term care, something on the order of 12%, I believe, of positive cases, yet in excess of two-thirds of deaths were realized in long-term care. The, the single item that was, has been broken out is with respect to the emergency prevention and containment and it is expected to that the same funding that was provided earlier this year is also going to be received. There is multiple funding envelopes in a variety of other categories. And certainly to skip one, as the last bullet point, you will acknowledge or, or see that there has been a wage enhancement offered for PSWs in long-term care of $3 per hour and certainly multiple funding streams available for the recruitment, retention, attraction of PSWs, which is a vital component towards COVID-19 preparedness, particularly as the second wave is upon us. Picking up once again on the influenza vaccines, it is of course the first recipients of, of the influenza vaccines are those most at risk. So I'm very thankful to report that the long-term care homes have received the influenza vaccines. Item seven is the Directive regarding, Directive Regarding Visitors to Long-Term Care Homes from the Acting Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Robert Cushman. The letter is attached. Item eight are the Critical Funding Priorities Fall Pre-Budget Submission. Advantage Ontario, which of course is the Association for the Nonprofit Long-Term Care Sector in Ontario, has provided a pre-budget submission to the province. Item nine, with respect to fundraising, and I repeat each month that fundraising has come to be a vital component of so many of the healthcare services provided, not just in Brentford County, certainly across the province and the country. Very pleased that the Butterfly Garden fundraiser continues. There are still butterflies available for purchase at $100 at each of Miramichi Lodge and Bonneville Manor. I do note and note in your calendars that the date of the virtual coffee house has been rescheduled to Friday, November 20th, 2020 due to a conflict with a similar event in Pembroke at a conflicting date. And finally, on fundraising, Miramichi Lodge was notified of a $1,000 donation on behalf of the Bruce and Lucy Wolfgram Foundation. So enormous gratitude to the Bruce and Lucy Wolfgram Foundation. Moving on, Madam Warden, the resolutions. Item 10 is the Emergency Services Advanced Care Paramedic Tuition Loan Program. Resolution number H-CC-20-10-71, moved by myself, seconded by committee. That County Council approved that the Advanced Care Paramedic Tuition Loan Program be continued through the 2020-2022 school year. The background is available. This is, is a valuable program in providing an upgrade to skills of the paramedics. Item 11 is the reallocation of a capital budget for Bonneville Manor. Resolution number H-CC-20-10-72, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that council approved that the approximately $50,000 in savings in parking lot repairs capital budget at Bonneville Manor be used to replace the required, yet unbudgeted cook line kitchen equipment replacement of six burner stove and oven and a two burner flat top grill oven and a deep fryer combination unit estimated value of $40,000. The background is provided in that this particular piece of equipment was not anticipated to fail at, at this time, yet it has been red-tagged and is in need of replacement. It will also not cost any further budget, given the savings that were realized in the parking lot repairs. Item 12 is the additional full-time personal support worker positions. Resolution number H-CC-20-10-74, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council approved the full-time personal support worker, PSW, complement the increased by three positions at Bonneville Manor and eight positions at Miramichi Lodge and implemented as soon as possible at an annual estimated cost of $8,570 for Bonneville Manor and $30,799 for Miramichi Lodge. A, a comprehensive background report is provided on this. What I would just like to add is that for all of this millennium, there has been constant advocacy that, that more care needs be provided in long-term care homes and that more full-time positions be created to establish that. It is certainly being discussed at the higher levels. The Long-Term Care Staffing Report that was delivered to Minister Fullerton on July 30th advocated for this. Council may very well be aware of the interim report from the Morocco or Long-Term Care Commission that was investigating the, the impact of COVID-19 first wave on long-term care has also made an interim report once again with a prioritizing of staffing and IPAC, infection prevention and control. And Madam Warden, by your leave, if I may, it is an unnumbered item, but certainly council is very much aware of all of the efforts with respect to VTAC, the advocacy that has been done, most particularly by yourself, Madam Warden, and currently of immense value with respect to the assessment centers, the COVID testing that has been delivered through the VTAC. And as I understand, our resident auteur, Mr. Cecil B. De Kelly, has some information to share with council on some initiatives with respect to advocating for VTAC.
He absolutely does. And in my Warden's address, I promised everyone that they would see his hidden talents and this is one of them. So Craig, take it away.
Wow, thank you, Warden. It's not an Oscar winner for sure, but at least I, I'd like to suggest that the Warden and Paul and I have had several chats. And while the, the crisis communication team has done an absolutely fantastic job, what the phase approach of where we're going with VTAC, at least as, as per the Warden's work with ministries and, and such, was that we are hearing, while many people have had great success with VTAC, the ability to know what it does or what it is is still a little vague in people's minds. And this is what, what was developed over the course of a few hours in the weekend as a, as a draft moving forward of what we could do as a, as a communications piece. So I'll leave it at that and can address concerns or otherwise, but sit back, enjoy a little three-minute video. Sean, if you please.
Are you feeling unwell? Are you without a family physician or nurse practitioner? We'd like to introduce you to Brentford County VTAC, your made-in-Brentford-County solution to 24/7 healthcare, including COVID-19 assessment. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Brentford County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center, known as VTAC, strengthens access to healthcare for all residents and so are emergency departments and 911 services are reserved for genuine emergencies. As always, if you have a health concern, including COVID-19, call your family physician or nurse practitioner first. Use VTAC if you do not currently have a primary care provider or cannot access your primary care provider. When you call VTAC at 1-844-727-6404, you will receive care and support from the team of healthcare professionals, including family and specialized physicians, nurse practitioners, mental health support and community paramedics. So how does VTAC work? First and foremost, if you think you may be experiencing a life-threatening emergency, such as a suspected heart attack, a suspected stroke, major bleeding or severe breathing problems, call 911 immediately, don't wait. If that's not the case, call VTAC at 1-844-727-6404. Your call will be answered by a medical receptionist, who will ask you for your Ontario Health Card number and order to proceed. This will be followed by a series of questions to gather basic details. The receptionist will book you in for a same-day telephone appointment with a family physician or nurse practitioner. You will be given an approximate appointment time. You will then be asked to be available for the appointment 30 minutes before and after the booked time. The family physician or nurse practitioner will call you at the number you provided to the medical receptionist. If a video connection is required, then the family physician or nurse practitioner will send you an email or text with the access. Please note, if you're booked for a telephone appointment, please have your computer switched on and ready to use if possible, in case the clinician recommends using video during your assessment. The family physician or nurse practitioner will provide you with a consultation via the telephone or video appointment to address your health concern in the comfort of your own home. Based on your care needs, the family physician or nurse practitioner may arrange for a community paramedic to visit you in your own home for an assessment and/or COVID-19 testing. In some cases, the family physician or nurse practitioner may also determine that a referral is required. Let's say, for instance, in the case of a mental health concern or for community acute care. If your symptoms worsen or become a medical emergency, please be sure either to call VTAC immediately or call 911 in the case of a severe medical emergency. Using VTAC is that simple. After all, it's a Brentford County solution for Brentford County residents.
So apparently my enunciation needs to be a bit better. But again, to, to counsel, that is a draft of what can be done. And again, by request of our Economic Development Group, I was happy to oblige. And we have a series of PDFs that we've created to help with this message. And I'm not sure. And I'm not sure, Sean, if you can share your screen. Just keeping it very simple with some simple messaging, the phone number, VTAC, and non-emergency medical assistance is just a phone call away. So if you could just zip through those, Sean. Again, just simple icons of the phone stethoscope and in the phone images, just to reiterate that it's just a phone and immediate access to a healthcare provider. So, Warden, that's the drafts and I'm happily open to Cisco and Ebert and everybody else that's out there for feedback. Thank you, Warden.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. And so we're on the topic now. Is there any comments or questions? Counselor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I think this is great. I've had so many phone calls about how it works. And this is something that should get out on social media and in the media sooner later, in my opinion, anybody wondering.
So we did lose a little bit of what you were saying, Counselor Murphy. So, but I'm pretty sure we got the sense of what you were referring to and certainly...
In a nutshell, it should go on social media.
There you go. And absolutely, and certainly, as you know, I mentioned in my warden's address that I had done three radio interviews, asking people to share their VTAC stories with our premier. And I've received a number of emails and phone calls at home, actually, people anxious to do just that. I mean, you know, it is an inconvenience for folks to have to sit down and send, you know, three or four sentences. But I think the more that the premier and the province of Ontario and the cabinet is aware of what VTAC is doing for people in the short term and the potential in the long term for any community that is struggling with family physicians, that we have to take advantage of it now. So again, Craig, you know, he mentioned it a couple of hours, that was a couple of hours on his weekend. He took the idea and went with it. So I thoroughly enjoyed all of his drafts to date and look forward to more. Counselor Murphy, did you have your hand up again?
Yes, and I'll stop my video so I don't freeze up. Yeah, Craig, you're quite the artiste. But to your point, Madam Warden, Bonnershire Valley also put the call to action, if you've used VTAC, please send your stories to the premier and then Australia. That will be in people's mailboxes on Friday.
That's it. That's excellent. Any other comments? Counselor Sweet, please.
Yeah, Warden, I didn't realize we had so many talented video people in Renford County. We just saw Lacey and now we see Craig Kelly. I think that's an excellent presentation and the sooner you roll that out, the better, because there's a lot of people out there that are wondering what VTAC is, who have heard about it. And I think that in very simple terms explains it. And congratulations to Craig and yourself for promoting that. I mean, it is so essential, healthcare and the ability to get healthcare within our community is extremely important. So to me, the better, the sooner we get that out and let people in the county aware of what this is all about, the better. So good job, Craig. Next stop is on some ad we'll see on national television in your video capacity. But seriously, it's well done. Good job.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Counselor Regier, please.
Thank you, Warden Robinson. And I just wanted to add in regards to the EO app, it was a great benefit, especially for those individuals who do not have social media. And I have heard from several of people within my community that it was great to hear because again, a lot of people are not on Facebook, not on social media. So it was a way of reaching out and it was a wonderful, wonderful benefit. So thank you so much for that.
You're very welcome. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll start at the beginning of the Health Committee Report. Any questions, comments under item number one? Two? Three? Four? Five, the Sierra Team, they have been kept busy lately. Counselor Bros, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. And through you to Chief Nolan, I'm just, I'm seeing the usage of the Sierra Team and staff increasing. And I'm just curious, is that funded separately from the regular paramedic service? And if not, does Chief Nolan see it creating significant budget pressures moving forward?
Nolan, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Can now, yes.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the question, Counselor Bros. So through you, Madam Warden, in response to the question, the Sierra Team activation is really a risk management strategy in that for many years, we would send paramedics into the bush, into the park, into the trails, based upon who was closest. And often, they would end up on people's four-wheelers, they would be hiking in the bush and not necessarily as well-equipped as they should be, both from a health and safety perspective, but also from a clinical acumen perspective, based upon the nuances that occur when you're in an austere environment, when you no longer have cellular radio communications or have to make the tough decision to spend the night in the bush with the patient to keep them comfortable and warm. So directly to your question, it is calculated within the paramedic service budget. So it is not an additional cost. The staff that are on the Sierra Team do receive some additional training that is built into our training budget. The Algonquin Park has come forward this year and provided additional equipment for our Sierra Team as an acknowledgement of the collaboration and partnership that we have. So for example, we provide their staff some training in the spring. They provide our staff some additional equipment, such as wheeled litters to be able to be on trails, that we can not only use in the park, but also use throughout the county. And we are in discussions, actually, this afternoon with John Swick at Algonquin Park to review this year's utilization. I can say that while the utilization overall is up, not only in the park, but throughout Renford County, it's lakes, rivers, trails, I would say that by taking a risk-managed approach, not only does it reduce the staff allocation to these calls overall, think that if staff are waiting at a trailhead or having to stitch it together to get in the bush, that's very different than having a coordinated approach where we can not only reduce the amount of time on task, we can increase the care that's provided and do it in a way that keeps our staff more safe. So I hope that answers your question. And on a go-forward basis, we'll continue dialogue with the park and the superintendent there. And I can say that while we have had some tragedies that have made the media over the past six to nine months, without a doubt, across Renford County, our cottage community, people on trails has exponentially increased. And I think that we've actually done an exceptional job of keeping people safe and reducing the number of tragic stories that have come to the media, because we've been able to provide expert clinical care, not only with Sierra Team, but across our entire paramedic service fleet.
Thank you very much, Chief Nolan, for that information. And, you know, we all know that Renford County Paramedic Service is renowned worldwide for your innovation, your ability to adjust to the needs of our community. So thank you very much. Counselor Bros, did you have supplementary?
No, I appreciate that response and I certainly do recognize the importance of that Sierra Team. And especially with COVID, there's much greater use of our trails. So I think it certainly is a wonderful service that our paramedics provide. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments for item number five? Counselor Emo, please.
Probably hornets' nests that I'm glad Counselor Donahue will have to deal with. But is there any opportunity to recover costs from someone? If they've been careless or avoided good advice about entering into an area and had an injury and I know it'd be difficult to apply criteria, but as a very simple example, sometimes municipal fire departments can access funding through someone's insurance company for, you know, attending an accident on a roadway. So I'm just wondering if there's any kind, or is that specific only to municipal fire departments? Or is it possible to do that with this team, should the need arise?
Chief Nolan, would you like to respond?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Madam Warden. So there's no statutory cover to be able to do that, like I believe through the Highway Traffic Act, there is for fire services and a billing requirement. The only statutory cover that we would have is when a physician is to deem the request for a paramedic service as being not medically essential. And I think that that tends not to cover these circumstances, because by the time something bad has happened, it would be deemed to be medically essential without judgment on how somebody got themselves in the predicament in the first place. So there's no direct line of sight that I'm aware of to be able to do that. Orange Air Ambulance has similar language. And in the odd occasion where they've attempted to exercise the nonessential language, it's become more of a legal dispute than it is a cost recovery exercise.
Counselor Emo, supplementary, are you good? You're good? Okay. Any other questions on item number five? Seeing none. Number six, a COVID pandemic update for long-term care. Seven, acting medical officer of health. And I'm sure everyone knows, but just in case you do not, Dr. Cushman meets with us every Monday at 10 o'clock with our emergency operations committee meetings as well and updates us, which we certainly appreciate. Number eight, critical funding priorities. Counselor Emo, please.
Yes, I'm just wondering, I agree with the, I agree with the points raised here. Is it the intent to have you, Warden, send a letter supporting this to the, to finance? Or are we content with just informing our MPP?
I don't really know that we had any direction from Health Committee on that. Counselor Donahue, do you recall?
Sorry, Madam Warden, slow off the mark on my clicker. No, that was, the direction was not forthcoming, but I think that it would be absolutely appropriate. Now, hang on. It would be appropriate, I will defer to Mr. Morrow on process. I know at committee, we elevate information items into action items. At council, it has been deemed that that would require us to step outside of our procedural bylaw. I'll defer to Mr. Morrow, though I do note also, welcome to the video from Ms. Shidi. Perhaps she may wish to speak to this as well.
Mr. Morrow? Ms. Shidi? Okay, yes, please, Ms. Shidi.
Sorry, no, I was just going to confirm that that direction had not been forthcoming from Health Committee.
So Mr. Morrow, do we, can we take direction now from county council?
I think we can. And, you know, Counselor Donahue is correct in what he's saying with respect to suspending the rules of procedure if council wishes to pass another motion providing that direction to staff.
Could I suggest it would be just a friendly amendment to the report and further the letter be sent to the Minister of Finance confirming our support for their submission?
And that certainly works for me. Do we need a motion to that effect, Mr. Morrow?
You should and you should suspend the rules.
Okay, so I first made the motion to suspend the procedural rules. Counselor Emo, Counselor Bros, all in favor? Carried. Okay. So Counselor Emo, would you like to just make your motion again? And then we'll look for a second or...
I would make the motion that the Warden be authorized to send a letter on behalf of the County of Renford to Minister of Finance, supporting the pre-budget submission by Advantage Ontario.
So your motion is that this be added to the report, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Donahue, were you seconding the motion or did you have a question?
I'm prepared to second that motion.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. So number nine, fundraising. Hope everybody's bought in their butterflies. Number 10, resolutions. Advanced Care Paramedic Tuition Loan. 11, oh, Counselor Emo, please.
Number 10, just I know, I thought I noted somewhere, oh, on the first paragraph on page 70, and it says approve up to six paramedics per year for this loan program. Is that enough? You know, why have we chosen six? I'm not disputing it. I'm just curious, given the size of our workforce and the increasing demands we're putting on them, that I think education and certification and whatever else would be helpful. I'm just wondering if it's, if there's a reason for six as opposed to eight or 12 or 18. I'm just curious.
Chief Nolan, I'm sure you have the answer to that question.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you. Six has been consistent with the number of people that have been accepted to advanced care paramedic programs. So the funnel is upstream on this one. And I believe that six would be adequate to be able to address the number of people that come forward seeking this level of support. And should that exceed the number six or additional advanced care paramedic training opportunities arise, I'd be happy to bring it back to council to revise that number.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Morrow?
Thank you, Warden, through you to Counselor Emo. Just in speaking with Jeff, I also want to acknowledge there's an administrative burden as well with increasing numbers in terms of setting up the loan program and putting the necessary paperwork in place. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Any other comments on item number 10? Item 11, the reallocating of capital budget or kitchen equipment. I just note that this came at least two weeks ago to Health Committee and is now coming to county council today. And these items have not been purchased. So I'm really wondering what kind of a hardship we're putting on the kitchen staff at Bonnershire Manor to try to make do for a month with inadequate equipment. And I know this is the process that we have to go through, but it does seem to be me a little bit ridiculous that if we need equipment to help feed the residents of one of our long-term care facilities, that we have to go through these hoops for an entire month before Ms. Shidi gets approval to do so. So just my comment. Anyone else have a comment about item number 11? Counselor Lynch, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Could we not do a special meeting for the five minutes to approve the funding?
I'm not sure. We're certainly approving it today, but I just think it's something that we should be cognizant of in the future as well. Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, if I might, though, perhaps Ms. Shidi, of course, there is contingency, has been put in place and everyone at Bonnershire Manor is being adequately fed. Perhaps Ms. Shidi, if you wish to speak to the contingency that was put in place when the red tags were applied.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Donahue, through you to Fall County Council. Yes, that's quite right. There's various other pieces of kitchen equipment that did allow the kitchen staff to continue to prepare and cook the food. This equipment not being available certainly was more labor-intensive. It required, you know, better planning, because we didn't have as many pieces available. as many pieces available. But it didn't impact the residents receiving the quality food that they receive each day. Thank you.
Just so everybody's clear, I wasn't suggesting that somehow our residents in Bonnershire Manor were not receiving adequate nourishment. But again, this equipment obviously is necessary to run our kitchen. And it just, to me, it seems like something that should have been, it should have been much, much quicker process for you. But anyway, Councilor Emo.
I'm wondering, Warden, you raise a very good point. I'm wondering if it should be referred back to Finance Committee and Chair Murphy possibly, you know, allowing, because this doesn't really impact budget. You know, it's within, it's, I know Counselor Hunt is going to cringe. It's within the envelope. And so I'm wondering if there could be some kind of, you know, a policy or that allows committee in instances like this and other situations where they can move money around within an envelope when there is some need for speed as opposed to, you know, taking an extra 14 or 18 days. And then there has to be some research about who can supply and then tender and maybe. So I'm just curious if there's a means of facilitating some movement with an upper limit of spending because committees are pretty responsible. They're not going to rush out and, you know, buy new golf cart or something silly. Sorry, Bob. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Emo. I'm sure Councilor Murphy can bring that back to a committee, but I see Counselor Donahue has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I want to be careful about advancing this. We certainly have processes and procedures in place, and there is spending authorities from the director to, through the CAO, through committees, through council. I want to make very clear that a very thorough and careful assessment was completed by Ms. Shidi and Bonnershire Manor as to the continuation of services. And in this instance, the procedures, or rather, the ability to continue to provide appropriate meals to everyone, to all of the residents of Bonnershire Manor, was deemed to be realized within the equipment that was there. So I would caution on perhaps amending procedures if, in fact, meals could not have been adequately prepared with the equipment that was in place at Bonnershire Manor. Certainly, the recommendation, I'm fairly sure, would have come forward to have, and again, the specifics here was not the spending authority. It is that it was not budgeted. Certainly, the spending authority would fall, at the very least, within the CAO's discretion, if not the directors. But in this instance, it was deemed that we could continue to get by on the equipment that we have. If that were not possible, then the procedure would certainly have been available for us to have convened a special council meeting. That there would never have been any concern with respect to being able to prepare adequate meals.
All right. Any other further comments on this item? Item number 12. The report as a whole? Do I have a mover?
So moved, Madam Warden.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Operations Committee and Counselor Pickett, please.
Thank you, Warden. Members of County Council, we, your Operations Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, item one, monthly status report is tabled on page 92 for your information. Item two, the capital program variance report is tabled on page 94 for your information. Item three, Ontario Provincial Police role in County of Renfrew. As County Council knows, we had Inspector Newfeld from the Upper Ottawa Valley Detachment and Staff Sergeant De Salvario from the Killaloo Detachment attend virtually at our Operations Committee this month. Concerns addressed included speeding, driving under the influence, impaired driving due to drugs, alcohol, or a combination of both, excessive noise due to mufflers. The OPP gave us information about the following campaigns that occur annually. Advised about OPP snowmobile, snow vehicle, all-terrain vehicle, vessel enforcement on trails and water. They also talked about the Section 10 with the Police Services Act referring to municipal agreements with the OPP stating that there may be opportunities to request enhanced services. They, of course, we all know that the County of Renfrew currently does not have enhanced programs with the OPP. I think all of us in County Council are a little frustrated throughout the county with the amount of speeding and that that takes place on our roads. The committee requested the OPP provide information on possible roles for the county about additional resources. But I think we can all imagine that that will come back, meaning more money to provide for more officers. We did talk about how municipalities have opportunities to assist the OPP by using speed signage and photo radar on roads and sharing the data that is collected with the OPP. The one bright spot in their comments, they did say the OPP wished to be proactive, and that's a word I have not heard from the OPP for many, many years, to stop speeding before it occurs through prevention, education, and community engagement. Item four, Highway 48 and County Road 40 traffic report. The request of the Township of Laurentian Valley was submitted for county to complete a traffic study at the intersection, Highway 148 and County Road 40, Greenwood Road. The count indicated, as per Ontario Traffic Manual, that traffic signals is not warranted. Results were forwarded to the Township of Laurentian Valley and the Ministry of Transportation of Ontario. The current plan has the MTO redesigning the slip lanes, but will continue to use stop signs for the T-intersection. The intersection is the sole responsibility of the MTO. Summer operations are in the process of winding down, and preparations are being made for the coming winter season. As the weather conditions permit, there'll still be carrying on with certain operations, including roadside brushing, ditch and culvert cleanouts, and sign replacements as weather holds. Winter operations, status and winter resignation are 6A. Partner is required to be 50% operational by November 1st and 100% operational by November 15th. Night patrol shifts are scheduled to commence on November 15th through till April 2nd, 2021. Winter sand, the supply and delivery and stockpiling of winter sand is pretty well completed in all the areas where it's being stockpiled. Winter maintenance agreements have been signed and taken care of. The default road is being looked after by the Township of Carroll-Male. Winter maintenance service for Swisher Road is provided by Pat Stewart Trucking. There's municipal year agreements partnered for winter maintenance from the Town of Renfrew from term 2019 to 2029. Municipal year-to-year partners, Town of Armprayer, from 2020 to 2030. Town of Deep River, proposed term 2020 to 2030. Multi-year rental agreements for winter operations, agreement with the Township of Bonnershire Valley for use of one bay at the Foremont Patrol, and agreement with the Algonquin's of Pick Wackagon for the use of one bay at Golden Lake Patrol. Fleet management disposal, item seven, fleet management disposal of surplus items. Successful bidder for the Ashfall Hot Box was the Town of Deep River, $2,700 for the Dodge Ram 1500 pickup truck. There was no bids, and it will proceed to public auction. Item eight, quotation, PWO 2020-25, a two-man door replacement at Ocean Patrol. Quotations were requested and received. Successful bidder was RGT Clutch Construction Limited in the amount of $10,6464. Under resolutions, item nine, tourism signage fees, resolution number OPCC 201063, moved by chair, seconded by committee. County Council approved waiving the tourism signage fees on county roads for the remainder of 2020 and for 2021. And further, that the tourism signage fees be reinstated in January 2020. The background is there for your information. Item 10.
Excuse me, Chair, if I can just interrupt. I'm sorry. As I was just reading this resolution, number 10, I realize it's not the resolution that was passed at committee. I've just spoken to Mr. Morrow, and he is going to put the amended resolution to the resolution to the...
I was reading this, and I didn't see that this was the resolution that we passed. I was going to say that nothing actually should be happening in this until there's further conversation with the municipality of Killaloo-Higerty-Richards.
That's correct. That was the amendment that actually I had asked for. So, Mr. Morrow is just asking if we can go on to item number, to the rest of the report, and then come back to 10. At that point, he should be able to share his screen with the resolution that we adopted at committee, please.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to item number 11, surplus 1980 Champion Grader, resolution number OPCC 201067, moved by chair, seconded by committee. The County Council recommended that the 1980 Champion Grader that was declared surplus be disposed of to the Renfrew County ATV Club for the purposes of trail maintenance in the amount of $1. And further, that staff be directed to negotiate the terms of disposal that will meet the needs of the Algonquin Trail Advisory Committee. This actually is a win-win for both parties. And in return for the sale of a dollar, the ATV Club will be doing approximately $10,000 worth of grading and maintenance of the Algonquin Trail over 79 kilometers. So that's a good plus for the County of Renfrew. Under bylaws, number 12, County Road 52, Burnstown Road, transfer of land, resolution number OPCC 201068, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw to acquire parts 611 on registered plan 49R 11071 for Marlene Freitag and Mary Melcher for the sum of $1. And further, that parts 6-11 on registered plan 49R 11071 be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration of the transfer documents. Background, this is another one of those ones that was done some time ago, but failed to be registered, and now is cleaning up lands to, cleaning this up to make it a legal transfer. Now, can we go back to item number 10, Mr. Morrow?
Yeah, he's still working on it. Do you need some time, Mr. Morrow? Are you ready?
I need a few more minutes.
Okay. So what we'll do while that's happening is we'll go back to the beginning of the Operations Committee report, and I will ask for any comments under item number one, monthly status report. Number two, the capital program variance report. Three, the Ontario Provincial Police role in County of Renfrew. Councilor Bros, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. And just, I do appreciate seeing that this was something that was brought to county. I would like to say that I've had a number of calls in our municipality, especially for County Road 30. The traffic has increased significantly on that road, and speeding is one of the concerns that the residents have, especially past the area where the Zummer subdivision is, where there's a lot of people who may be out walking or cycling. And the Ottawa Valley Active Transportation Group has also asked if we could put up any radar signs along that road to help monitor speed and so on. And I do believe they've CC'd that request to the Operations Committee and Mr. Perkins. So I'm just wondering, as we move into budget, is there an opportunity for our public works to maybe look at some of the options or costs on having some of those mobile radar signs?
Thank you very much, Councilor Bros. Counselor Pickett, please.
Thank you, Warden. At the meeting, Counselor Bros, he did mention what is going on in McNabb-Brayside. We have ordered one of the Black Cat machines, which I believe is similar to what the county has, and that's what the county used for getting data on the traffic on Greenwood Road that they supplied to MTO. But the machine we have, it does not show the speed. You get them flashing the speed of the vehicles as they're going by. The machine we've got doesn't do that. It does track the speed. It tracks the size of the vehicle so that we can tell whether it's a large truck, or a tractor-trailer, or a car. It gives us a date, date and time of day. So it collects all that data, which the OPP are interested to get. But since that time, we're also, we're starting to look into getting our own photo radar. But I was contacted by our bylaw enforcement people. There's always new technology coming out, I guess, but apparently now, there's something through the bylaw enforcement people they have that they can actually clock speeders with something like a cellphone. I'm not sure, it was just a voicemail message I got from Jim McMinn. And he's been talking with Mississippi Mills and the Town of Armprayer about this, because he's the bylaw enforcement for them and us, and I think other areas. So he wants to get together and make a presentation. And apparently, he can, he is an enforcement officer for the province, can lay speeding charges and get the information from the license plates that's required to lay the speeding charges. So I'm going to definitely look into that, because I don't have any faith anymore in trying to educate people about speeding. Is what the OPP said that they would sooner do with people is to get them to stop speeding through education. I think we've gone way past that. So I will be looking into that, and I can, once I've got things more into place, I will be happy to let you know what it's costing. be happy to let you know what, what it's, what it's costing. But I, I do believe, like I'm moving forward to spend the money on it because in my opinion, in my township, the speeding has gone way beyond not spending the money on it. People's lives are at risk. It's hard to walk anywhere in the township. So I, I'd be happy to let you know what it's, what it's costing us once I get a final, final report on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Donahue. You had your hand up?
I did. Thank you, Madam Warden. I think that certainly what has been brought forward by Councilor Pickett and through the operations committee is certainly valuable. We likewise in Admaster Bromley have, have been experiencing those same situations. We have not gone with the large signage site or the, the mobile device that BV has. We have purchased one of those small devices and we are moving it across various parts of our municipality. I think that that data absolutely, as Councilor Pickett has suggested, is incredibly valuable to the OPP and certainly to, to Councilor Doncaster for recognizing, of course, that Deep River is policed by its own municipal police force. Having said that, that I would caution that policing is at the responsibility of the lower tier municipalities to work through, whether it be through CPACs or through PSABs, Police Service Advisory Boards. Because it does give me pause with respect to, there may be opportunities to request enhancement of services. Whatever enhancement of services would be borne by the lower tier municipality is the only linear assets over which I am, any of us are not responsible, are the, the King's Highway or Queen's Highway system, whether it be county road or township roads, the policing on all of those is at the expense of the lower tier municipality. So certainly I am, I think that there is a value here. Perhaps this is something that we may even hear, you may hear with, I'm assuming, Councilor Murphy perhaps, from Strategy Corp, whether this is something that they may be giving consideration to from a county level.
Thank you, Councilor Donahue. Councilor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. While I'm not going to speak about Strategy Corp yet because we don't have that final, that final report, however, as much as I appreciate this portion of the operations report, I am a bit concerned about the first paragraph on page 86, where it says, County of Renfrew currently does not have enhancement programs with the OPP. The County of Renfrew has no programs with the OPP. So that line, I think if, if somebody outside the realm of this body or somebody not watching, or not watching our YouTube, if they just read that, it could be construed that the, that the County of Renfrew does have a role with the OPP, which we do not.
Okay, so are you, you just want, are you asking for clarification or deletion or just, are you just noting your concern?
Well, I'm noting, but I think that what would be more appropriate, and I'm not sure if any of the lower tier, local tiers, I know obviously Councilor Doncaster doesn't, but does, do any of the local tiers have enhancement? Because if they don't, my recommendation would be that the local tiers of the County of Renfrew currently do not have.
Or we could just, yes, or we could just change it to the County of Renfrew currently does not have any programs with the OPP.
Yes.
That may be just more appropriate than trying to figure out who has and, and has and has not.
That's actually what I had written down and then I second guessed myself. So yes, it's, it's not enhancement, we have nothing.
Okay, so, Councilor Pickett, are you, are you comfortable with just indicating that County of Renfrew currently does not have any programs with OPP? And said, and this may be, but the sentence continues, and this may be an opportunity for county council to take an active role with ensuring there is an OPP presence on the trails, which, which is still, which was part of the, definitely part of that conversation, which seems fair. Are you comfortable with that amendment?
Yes, I'm quite comfortable because we actually, at this point, really don't have it, like, they, they actually don't even want to go out onto the trails right now either. So they, they do say they have people trained for it, but they don't have enough people to go out there. And there's always situations where they assign people, but they won't go out onto the trails unless they have two officers available to go at a time. And it just never seems to work out that they have, there's only, I think, two of them trained to go at any time in the area, so.
Okay, so Council, Councilor Murphy, are you, are you going to make a motion that the report be amended to delete the word enhancement? That will work. I believe that will work. And, uh, Councilor Pickett, are you seconding that?
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of the amendment? Thank you very much. That was a good catch. Item number four, Highway 148. Certainly disappointed as far as Renshaw Valley is concerned, but we will keep forging ahead to see what we can do. Councilor TJ, please.
Thank you, I apologize. I just want clarification from Councilor Pickett. Did you say your bylaw enforcement, I'm just going back, bylaw enforcement officer could lay fines if, like legislation allows that?
That's, that's the information, that's the information that he gave to me, Councilor TJ.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Brows, please.
So just for my clarification, I think what I'm hearing is that if there's a, even if it's a county road going through a municipality and we want to put up a radar, a portable or stationary unit, that that would be the municipality's responsibility, it wouldn't be, we'd probably have to get permission from county to put something on their road? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other further comments on item number three? Item number four, Highway 148 intersection at Greenwood Road. Councilor Bennett, please.
Thank you, Warden. True you. On item four, I, I have issues with this. I, I feel that safety of that intersection is being overlooked because of numbers. I think that we need to take a second look at that and be more proactive and force the MTO hands, other than just supply them with a few numbers, say it don't qualify. I did sit at that intersection twice now. I can definitely see the need for more than a stop sign at that T intersection. I totally disagree with, with the avenue we're taking here and just saying, well, it doesn't follow that guideline. I myself, when Highway 17 was built, I took upon myself to get the lights out at O'Brien Road and Highway 17 intersection. And at the time, MTO said no, that, that it wasn't marked. Within 45 days, I actually had a yes, and within 65 days, I actually had work starting on putting the lights in. I, I think we need to be more proactive and look at the safety aspect instead of the number aspect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Bennett, and I certainly appreciate your comments. Renshaw Valley Council has been advocating for a traffic circle at this intersection with MTO for at least the past two years. We shared the information that we received this time around and the conversation is continuing. I understand, and I looked to Mr. Morrow, that MTO is being invited to come to a council meeting, I believe it's January, am I correct in that?
In the new year.
In the new year, so hopefully we can have that conversation. You know, the, the second phase of Highway 148 rehabilitation is, is planned to occur within the next two years. So, you know, there's, our time is running out for them to consider a, a traffic circle as opposed, or yes, traffic circle, as opposed to just lengthening the merge lane. So again, I certainly appreciate your comments and we will, we'll look forward to meeting with MTO in January. I know that in the past, and I believe it was Council EMO brought it up at our last meeting, that in the past, almost on a yearly basis, we did have MTO coming up and just giving us an overview of what their ministry was doing as far as roadways in, in Renfrew County are concerned. So it's well overdue and we will look forward to hearing from them in January. But thank you again for your comment. Any other comments on item number four? Councilor Brows, please.
I certainly, excuse me, I certainly do agree that this intersection needs more attention. And if there is a meeting scheduled with MTO in January, it would also be, I think, important to get an update from them on what they're doing as far as the intersection in Golden Lake where County Road 30 and Highway 60.
I'm sure that we can give MTO some, a heads up at some of these specific intersection and areas of concern, or at least that we need updating on. Councilor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Councilor Brows stole that right out of my brain. I couldn't agree with Councilor Bennett more. I think that this is another example of ministries sort of lumping us together with more urban centers and not realizing that even though our traffic counts or accidents might not warrant, when your boots on the ground, you absolutely see the need for certain intersections to have lights. And I think that January is the perfect opportunity for all of us to lobby for any of our local tiers that need our help. And, you know, as, as members of the County of Renfrew, I think that it behooves us all to speak out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor EMO, please.
Thank you, Warden. I think we should remember too, that part of the reason for inviting them is that they always update us on their, on their capital projects so that we in turn, the local tier can, can merge some of our contracts with, with those. So I, you know, I'm not sure how long the meeting will go, but it might, it might be simply an opportunity to raise these issues as questions and then have the opportunity to schedule a follow-up meetings on the specific issues. Because I don't know that we want to tie up council's time debating these individual concerns with all 17 of us offering an opinion. So I, I hope, you know, that we can remember that and, and structure the, structure the meeting so that we get more updates on an annual basis as opposed to less.
I'm sure that Mr. Morrow will keep me on the straight and narrow when it comes to what we will be discussing as, as a delegation, so thank you for that.
We're worried about myself, Warden, and not you.
Oh, you should worry about both of us. Councilor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Certainly I'm unfamiliar with the intersection, rather I am familiar with the intersections. I do not have occasion often to use them. So I am certainly in the dark with respect to data. All I would suggest is on any of these, I am in support of, of any measures that are warranted. But I would think that if this is something that is likely to be anticipated when the delegation is here from MTO, that it is supported by data as opposed to, to subjective view. So I would certainly encourage anyone that, that would be proposing to bring something forward, have the documentation in support.
Thank you for that. Any other further comments? Item number four. Number five, summer operations. Six, winter operations. Seven, the fleet management. Eight, quotation. Nine, the resolution. Councilor EMO, please.
Thank you, Warden, and I apologize to chair and committee. I, I should have probably been a little clearer when we had this discussion. I, I sort of assumed the recommendation, instead of reinstated, would be reviewed. So I'm wondering if, if I can make a motion to suspend the procedural bylaw and, and change that to reviewed as opposed to reinstated? Because I think it more accurately reflects our conversation that day because we have some expectation that COVID is not going to end on December 31st, 2021, or the effects of COVID is not going to end on December 31st, 2021.
Right, so as we did with the amendment and just amended the note saying enhanced programs, according to Mr. Morrow, I do not have to suspend the rules of procedural rules. I just need to move from a second, second or to amended to say, please be reviewed in January 2022. So you're moving that, Councilor EMO?
Yes, I can.
And seconded by Councilor Pickett? Any comments? Councilor Donahue, please.
I'm just wondering, and I will certainly defer to Mr. Morrow, I'm wondering if rather than doing this at this point, if this should be severed from the report as a whole and dealt with separately. In my estimation, I will certainly defer to my colleague, Councilor EMO is certainly much more read on friendly amendments than I. But perhaps this is best dealt with in severing it from the report. In my estimation, changing it from reinstated to reviewed is, does not fit within the definition of friendly.
And I would agree with you, it's not, it's not so much friendly, that's, yeah.
Okay, so you are making the motion to table, Councilor Donahue? Our table, I'm sort of sever, excuse me.
Sever it from the report and, and it be considered separately.
Okay, thank you. And a second or, Councilor EMO, all in favor? Carried, thank you very much. We'll go on to item number 10, and I will turn it over to Councilor, Councilor, excuse me, CA Morrow, please.
I'm just trying to share my screen, sorry. I had it up here a minute ago. So my apologies, Warden. The resolution that was in the report that you saw was amended, and this in front of you that is on the shared screen is the resolution that should have been in the report. So if I may, Warden, I'll read the resolution so everyone is clear.
Yes, please.
That the operations committee recommend that county council direct staff to advise the township of Killaloo, Haggerty and Richards, that the county intends to remove the existing retaining wall within the county, within the county's right of way and landscape grade receive the area. And the Calvary Baptist Church, 148 Queen Street in Killaloo, Ontario. And further, that staff confirm the township's plan for the remaining portion of the retaining wall on Call Street.
Councilor Morrow, that is our council, why are you on the council today? That is the actual resolution that's in the report right now, that you just, what you just wrote, read. I under, I believe that the amended resolution indicated that our staff would, would consult with Killaloo Haggerty Richards. I believe that was the intent. So, you know, what, I'm just going to, we're going to give Mr. Morrow time to find the resolution that was passed at, at committee. So I, I will tell you that I did jinx us all. I thought that we might be able to get through this and finish up by one o'clock, but it's not looking like that's going to be possible. So what I'm going to suggest is that we take a break, our lunch break now. It's 25 minutes after 12 and that we reconvene at one o'clock, please. Enjoy your lunch. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. I hope you all enjoyed your lunch. We're going to go back to the Operations Committee report and item number 10, We have reviewed the video from the committee meeting, and this is, in fact, the exact wording of the motion that we did pass. I believe that we had talked about consulting or having a conversation with Killaloo Haggerty Richards about our plans, but it is not, my recollection is not reflected in the video, nor is it in this motion. So, Counselor Emo, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden. I agree with you, and I think maybe where the confusion lies is when we use the word "confirm", and maybe I had a hand in crafting this, so maybe I... There's no maybe. I missed that word. I think that's the wrong word. And I would suggest that, you know, I would like to see us discuss some kind of an amendment for this, because I truly believe from my notes and recollection that we were talking about more of a consultation to see, you know, what their plan is for the curvature of the retaining wall, and if there was some other stakeholders in the community who might work with the county and the township to resolve it in a different manner, and then it was going to come back to us. So that's why I'm a little upset with myself, quite frankly.
Well, I think we all share in this. So are you, do you want to make a motion to sever item number 10 as well from the report?
Yes, Warden, I would make that motion.
All right. Counselor Donahue, are you seconded? Okay. I'm sorry. Counselor TJ, did you want to say something?
Sorry. Thank you very much, Madam Warden. This is definitely not what I voted on at the committee. And if everybody recalls, I brought it up, saying, "This is not the right way." Then you, Madam Warden, said, "No, it's too strong, and we need to consult." But I mean, if they played it back, I cannot believe that's what you said, and that's what we voted on, because I would have never voted in favor of this. And you were able to convince me that what your motion said was that we would sit down and talk before any decision was made, and maybe we could do something together, you know, as partners. So I cannot support the motion the way it's sitting there, and I apologize maybe, but I truly, truly believed what you said, and Peter seconded. I voted in favor, but that's not what I felt that was said. So I apologize for the mess, but...
Well, we all own this. So I'm going to ask for the motion to have item number 10 severed from the Operations Committee report. All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. So let's move on to item number 11, the surplus grader. Any comments? Number 12, bylaws, Burnstown. Oh, Counselor Reinwald, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to say it's good to see that the County ran through supporting the Algonquin Trail with equipment to service that is required by the county, and that the ATV club will do the physical work. So that's really great to hear. I'm just wondering, what 79 kilometers of trails are being looked at, and do they plan on expand that distance at a later date? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reinwald. Mr. Kelly, would you have the answer to that question?
I can absolutely attempt it. Thank you, Warden, through you. What I can suggest to you, sir, is that the kilometers that are open are from Armpryor to Petawawa at this point. So we won't be grading any kilometers in that section for now. I mean, what we've agreed to, for the most part, is that this is the start of the 80 kilometers, and then as we go into Larrington Hills and north, that this agreement will be part of that as we move forward. Maybe not on a free basis, if you will, but a cost for service or a fee for service as we move forward. So again, the trail is only open between Armpryor and Petawawa, so they'll concentrate in that area in terms of grading.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Any other comments? Seeing none. Item number 12, County Road 52, Burnstown Road Transfer of Land. The report as a whole, except for severed items nine and 10. All right. Can we go back to, okay, I need some direction. Mr. Morrow, do I go, do I look for a motion to adopt the report without nine and 10? All right. So do I have a mover?
No move.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. We'll go back to item number nine, the tourism signage fees. Counselor Emo.
Yes, Warden, thank you very much. And through you to counsel, I'd like to make a motion that the the word reinstated in the resolution number OPCC 20-10-63 be changed to revisited. And the rest of the motion, I think, is appropriate.
Director, you have a seconder. Counselor Murphy. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Thank you very much. That one was easy. Now we're on to number 10. Counselor Emo, do you want to take this on?
Yeah.
Madam Warden, perhaps we have to adopt the resolution as amended now?
Okay. Thank you very much. So I need a mover and a seconder to adopt the resolution as amended. Moved by Counselor Emo, seconded by Counselor Pickett. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Morrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden. I'm just wondering...
You don't have...
Thank you, Warden. I'm just wondering if there's any value in reading the original resolution from the Operations Committee report that was in, so people can see what was originally presented, and then we can have the conversation about what was originally there, because it is significantly different in the county council report, based on your amendment, to what was originally there.
I think that would be helpful, because I believe that at least four members of that committee, myself included, believed we were pretty much clear on what her intent was. So if you don't mind reading the original, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Warden, through you to County Council. So the original recommendation that was in the Operations Committee read as follows, that the Operations Committee direct staff to remove the existing retaining wall and landscape grade and reseed the area at the Calvary Baptist Church located at 148 Queen Street, Killaloo, Ontario. That was the original resolution. So again, counsel has corrected. The amendment was significant and opened the door up to having the conversation with respect to the county's intent, as opposed to directing staff to actually undertake the work.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morrow. So Counselor Emo would like to go with this.
Thank you. I think, you know, I think we got hung up on two words, was advise and confirm. Because now that the CL read the original motion, we felt that by advising them, then that would be some discussion. It would come back to committee for further report once the conversations were completed, especially around the remaining portion of the retaining wall. So I think, you know, I think that was the intent. I think that's how we got hung up in thinking we'd resolve it, so there'd be some consultation. And so I would suggest, in place that, you know, the original motion should, would stand, and then, and at the end further, that staff consult with the township for plans for the remaining portion of the retaining wall on Coal Street and in front of Calgary or Calvary Baptist Church. And I think that would encompass and allow some dialogue, and then, you know, see if there's another solution.
Okay. I know Mr. Morrow was typing that. In the meantime, Counselor TJ.
But Counselor Emo, you're not bringing it back to the committee. It says that the intent is that the county's going to go ahead and do it and talk to us about what we can do on our portion that they believe is ours. So you're not saying, "Talk to the township and then come back." That's not what you're saying in your motion, anyways, I believe. Thank you.
Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Warden. The resolution that is currently on the table provides no direction to staff to undertake any work. In fact, the direction, as I read it, suggests that staff should have a conversation with the township of Killaloo Haggerty Richards, advising of their plans, and also having a conversation with the township of Killaloo Haggerty Richards with respect to their intent as it relates to the portion of the retaining wall on Coal Street. It was always our intent to bring that back to Operations Committee once we had those conversations, because we have no authority to undertake the work.
Thank you for that clarification. So I'm wondering if it's just as simple as the resolution as written, with adding and report back to committee. Counselor Donahue, you had your hand up.
Actually, you had taken the words right out of my brain, Madam Warden.
I apologize. Counselor Emo.
With that, I would withdraw my proposed motion, because there wasn't a seconder anyway.
Are you comfortable, then, with that addition?
Well, yeah, I think if somebody makes that motion, I think it addresses it. And so I withdraw my motion.
I'm looking for a mover and a seconder motion. So Counselor TJ, Counselor Emo?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bennett.
Sorry, just looking for my mouth. Thank you, Warden. I still do have a little bit of issue with this, because I am seeing this totally different than the committee and the county staff are. I research this totally and understand with what the lawyer has put in front of us. They said that the county of Rhenfrew inherited that retaining wall. There is no doubt in my mind that's what it is. It is a structure. The structure goes from, well, start to finish. And although it turns on to Killaloo's property, it still belonged to the Department of Highways, which we inherited from the Department of Highway. So I can't get in my mind how at the line where it hits the intersection of the street, that we don't own it as a county. I just, that's blowing, that's being blown in the wind in my mind. The other part of it is that there has to be some engineering come back to committee, showing what's going to happen if it's just got a top-of-land grade to it. The water is going to move three times as quick coming off that hill as it does right now. So I think there's a little bit more to the motion than just going to Killaloo Haggerty and Richards and saying, "You've got to look after your part. The engineering needs to be done on the county part to at least look at what's going to happen to water flows." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And certainly, again, as indicated by Mr. Morrow, this motion does not allow county staff to do anything with that retaining wall at this juncture. And so I'm wondering if you would be satisfied with the motion, because it is requiring our staff to have a conversation with Killaloo Haggerty Richards and to report back to committee. And perhaps it's at that stage that there should be more discussion about what actually needs to happen, or who's responsible for which portion. Would you be content with just referring that back to committee? Counselor Bennett?
I'm content with, as long as it's coming back to committee, and I can do my argument there. If it's not, if what comes back to the committee is still not satisfactory to me.
Absolutely. And I don't want to restrict you from making your argument now, if you would like, but I'm thinking that it's probably best to do that the committee level, when we have a little bit more information about how the Killaloo Haggerty Richards is feeling about this entire situation as well. Counselor TJ, please.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I agree with Counselor Bennett. That's why we need to talk. My road super told the council that we do not, county is responsible for the whole wall, and we've spoken to our lawyer, but that's all to have to be discussed as we go along. And Counselor Bennett's correct. We are going to be seeking engineering advice, because we believe it wouldn't be the right way to go. So I'm glad, though, the motion speaks to that we're going to come back. Let us have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Perkins, my road super, and then we'll, you know, come back to the committee. So I think it's a good motion, Dave, and it still allows us to come back.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Not sitting on the Operations Committee, I am certainly not as engaged and knowledgeable on this. I just question, is the retaining wall, or any of the matters surrounding that, is there any urgency to this that would perhaps urge us then to be doing several things concurrently rather than consecutively?
We have Mr. Bulldog here today in place of Mr. Perkins. So, Mr. Bulldog, do you want to make a comment?
Thank you, Madam Warden, and to counsel. In terms of the engineering and the review of what needs to be done, certainly we'll do that before it comes back. My conversations with Lee about this topic is that he was going to talk to them and bring the items back, as well as review all the engineering that's required. So hopefully that will give you some confidence that it will come back appropriately. If there's any other questions?
Thank you very much for that information. Are there any other questions or comments concerning this motion?
Perhaps I was the only one that was very broken up. I didn't, wasn't actually able to understand what Mr. Bulldog had said.
Well, he indicated that engineering was in the plans, as well as conversation, that Mr. Perkins intended to have with Killaloo Haggerty Richard's staff, and that all the information would be brought back to Operations Committee meeting in November. That's a synopsis of what you said, Richard. Am I correct?
Yes. Thank you, Warden. Just, Lee won't be back to be able to have the conversation with the township and get all that together in time for November, but I imagine, first thing in the new year, that he would have a package for consideration for committee.
Okay. So in answer to Counselor Donahue's question, there isn't any urgency to have this done in the next month or two, is what you're saying? Is that correct?
No, that's correct. Lee's plans did take on the consideration, and he will bring it back as soon as possible.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Emo, you had your hand up.
And that was essentially, I was just going to, took a quick look at the notes from the meeting, and I was going to answer to Counselor Donahue that, no, there is no urgency for this. It's not an imminent danger of failure. And I think the expectation of the committee was it was a 2021 work project. It wasn't going to happen. Even if there was a conversation last week, it wasn't going to start next week. So it's safe to leave it until the spring.
Thank you.
Counselor TJ.
Thank you very much. Yes, Lee was in touch with our road super, and definitely indicated that we wouldn't be able to talk to him about this till maybe December or early January. So we're quite aware that it's kind of sitting for a little bit. So, and that's fine. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Item number 10. So I'm going to ask for the vote on the resolution as amended. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much.
Madam Warden, can I inquire, and I know that was a lengthy discussion, had we approved the actual amendments prior to approving the motion, the resolution as amended?
Yes, we did. I'm getting the nod from Mr. Morrow.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping me on my toes. Okay. Last but not least, Finance and Mint Committee report. Counselor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and I apologize if I do start to crackle. Could somebody let me know, and I'll turn my video off while I do this report? Members of County Council, we, your Finance and Administration Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one is the communication and messaging for COVID-19 and VTAC. Obviously, we know at this time that communication and messaging is so important to our residents, not only to get out our own messaging about COVID-19, but also, as we discussed with health... Health Committee and Mr. Kelly's awesome little video, you know, how to use VTAC. So thank you to everybody that's worked on the communication. Warden, I think you've done an amazing job. Number two, of course, the Warden addressed this in her Warden's address. Congrats to Craig Kelly. Number three is the 2021 budget schedule. It should be very interesting if we have to do budget by Zoom, but I guess that will remain to be seen. Number four is the Safe Restart Agreement funding guidelines. So I hope everybody was, took advantage of the Phase Two if they were eligible. That was a really fantastic piece of news for us in Bonnershire Valley. Number five, our new finance manager. I don't know if Daniel is on the line with us today, but through Mr. Foss, congratulations to Daniel Burke, formerly of the Township of North Halden Oberhorst. I hear there's been a lot of stealing of staff around the county these days, so congrats again. Number six is the Electronics Meetings Resolution, FACC 20-10-89. Moved by myself, seconded by committee, that staff continue to evaluate electronic meetings and the provisions outlined in the procedural bylaw to determine their effectiveness. And further, that staff be directed to survey members of council for any concerns that they may have with respect to electronic meetings. And further, that staff provide the results of this survey to the March 2021 meeting of the Finance and Administration Committee. And further, that staff undertake a cost benefit analysis of the various electronic meeting platforms, i.e. Zoom and MS Teams. And there's some, there's some background there. We had quite a lengthy discussion about this, so I'll, you know, we can open it up. All of which is respectfully submitted as myself as Chair and committee members, Rose, Doncaster, Donahue, Hunt, Pickett, Robinson, and Sweet. And Madam Warden, I win.
Yes, you do. So far, so far. Anyway, thank you very much, Counselor Murphy. We'll begin at the, item number one, communications and messaging. Any comments? Counselor Emo, please.
Yes, and I apologize. I imagine my voice is getting very tiresome today. Just wondering if Counselor Love and I can have access to some of the video messaging around VTAC for our duties at Roma and AMO respectively. I'd like to try and get that video or some videos on the agenda at AMO just to introduce the concept and then invite further conversation with some of the other rural municipalities. And I would imagine, and I can't speak for Counselor Love, but she's worked hard to get VTAC on the upcoming agenda, which is, I believe, next week at Roma. And it might be a, you know, a suitable lead in or a follow up to send that out, so.
I'm certainly, we could certainly follow up with all of that information. There will be a PowerPoint presentation as well on the 13th of November, I believe, when we're making the presentation at Roma. But yes, we will get all this out so that we can spread it as far and wide as possible. Counselor Sweet.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Warden. And I wanted to talk just a little bit about the VTAC. As I indicated, I think it's an extremely valuable program that we've got going. It seems to me that the last time we sat here that there was a, maybe a bit of a question as to how this was all getting paid for, that there were some sort of comments made that, don't be worried, it's going to be handled. The recent announcement that was made by the province with regards to additional funding, are we in line for some funding for the program that's in place, that the ongoing program? Or can you give me an update? Or somebody, Jeff Foss, or somebody give me a bit of an update as to how we paid, we're paying for that? As I understand it, it just came from some senior bureaucrats, but not necessarily from the minister themselves. Can you, can you give me an overview of that or an update?
Certainly, I'm looking to see whether or not Chief Nolan is still with us. I don't think so. So, Mr. Foss, can you assist here, please?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Currently, our VTAC program is operating based on a system where we are invoicing Armpryor Regional Health for all of those activities. And we have been doing that since, I think, the program began in April. In a recent report that we brought forward through to Finance and Administration as well as County Council, we, as at the staff level, were sharing some concerns that that program, although we were invoicing in accordance with the direction provided, we had not received any payments. And I think at that time, there was about $850,000 or so that was still outstanding. So I am pleased to advise council today that we did receive a number of payments from earlier invoices. And so we are paid now through to the month, the end of the month of July. But August and September invoices still remained outstanding, but I think this is certainly some movement in the right direction for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foss. Supplementary, Counselor Sweet.
Yeah, thank you. Well, that's good to know. It really is because I was getting a little bit concerned about, about that situation. I've been in that environment where comments are made by senior bureaucrats, they're not followed up by the ministers themselves. So I'm pleased to see that the county is getting compensated or that that's not going to cost us the money. I still think it's an extremely valuable program that we've got there. So, but that's very encouraging to hear that the funds are flowing. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention because it is important, although they are in the rears, they are coming through. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just to perhaps a little bit more flesh on the bones, the assessment centers across the province, I believe in most instances were administered through acute care or hospitals. And in the case of Renfrew County and the district, through Armpryor Regional Health, it was the VTAC model that has become the assessment centers. And that is, is the means by which this is administered. With respect to the funding, as Counselor Sweet has said, of course, that is a concern and a conversation. I will note that it is not inconsistent, though, with the dispersment of funds. I do not know what anyone else's experience within the Township of Admester Brumley, our expenditures due to the flooding in 2019 were in excess of a half a million dollars and no monies have been yet received from that. And our damage was wrought on Good Friday of 2019.
Thank you. Any other comments? Item number one. Seeing none. Item number two, Mr. Kelly's achievements. Again, congratulations, Craig.
Warden, if I may, I'd just like to thank County Council for their support over this last couple of years while I finished this long, arduous diploma program. But it's well worth while and would encourage my peers and colleagues and otherwise to complete it. And, but again, thank you to the council for supporting me in this endeavor.
Well, on behalf of all County Council, you're very welcome. Good job. Number three, the budget schedule. Counselor Emo, please.
Thank you. Just a quick note, congratulations to yourself and Mayor Lemay and City Council and, I believe, Finance Committee and staff for coming to what is a very reasonable and wise compromise to ensure that there is stability for both parties. This is a relationship that always needs careful tending and it looks like it's in good hands between you and the mayor. So thank you.
You're very welcome, although this was, this was something that was decided last year when Warden Murphy was leading the show. So congratulations, Counselor Murphy. Any other comments? Item number four, restart agreement. Again, just to remind everyone that we have written a letter to Minister Akabowski and Minister Clark asking that we be allowed to use the Safe Restart funding for some capital purchases that will allow us to operate safely. We still haven't heard back at this point. And a question to Mr. Foss, I thought I read somewhere, and I could be in error, that these funds had started to flow to municipalities. Have we received any of the $2.78 million as of yet?
Thank you, Madam Warden, for the question. And we have received all of it in its entirety. It sits in our bank account.
Wow, that's excellent. Good. Can't wait to spend it. Any other comments? Item number four. Number five, finance manager, Daniel Burke. Very pleasant young man. I've had an opportunity to have some short conversations with him and he looks like, every time I walk by his office, his head's down and he looks like he's working, so. Item number six, electronic meetings. The report as a whole. Do I have a mover?
Madam Warden.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Bylaws. Do I have a motion? Thank you. I'm looking for a mover and a second or that the bylaws listed on item 11 and attached here to as Schedule A on the County Council agenda dated October 28, 2020, be deemed read three times and passed. Mover and second appears. Counselor Donahue and Counselor Pickett, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Any notice of motions? Seeing none? Any members written motions? I don't believe there are any. New business. Counselor Doncaster.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I don't know if it gives me pleasure to tell you this, but I failed again at my bid to get a FCM Board of Directors. However, having said that, similar to in the past, instantly I had two VPs and a number of the Ontario Caucus members reach out to me and to make sure that I did apply for committee positions. And I was given assurances, and even with the incoming president, that they will be appointing me to committees again. So, so I will be there, so.
That's very good news. They obviously recognize your value and the possible error of their ways not electing you to board.
Well, yeah, and I think the, if I might, this year, virtual elections, we talked, I talked to a number of the Ontario Caucus colleagues. And, I mean, I can come up with all kinds of excuses, I guess, but I think it's more just a victim of numbers because there, this year, like typically, we get maybe 75 people voting. And it's easy to talk to 75 people, but virtually there were over 2,000 eligible voters. And so the numbers games between the larger urban centers in the cities, I think it's pretty hard for the, you know, 75 or 80 eligible voters or registered voters from rural Ontario to overcome those numbers is very difficult. That's our theory. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. Maybe just people don't like me, whatever.
I think it's a reasonable theory. Counselor, Counselor Emo, is it in reference to Counselor Doncaster?
Yes.
Please. Go ahead.
Actually, that falls in line with a conversation with somebody else. It is very difficult for those of us from smaller centers in eastern Ontario to gain a large enough presence to be recognized when you go to, when you, when you get into some of the, some of the associations that represent municipalities. And I'm not sure what the answer is in terms of resourcing, but I think, you know, the county Finance Committee at some point should take a look at trying to assist members who are running for a position at some point, just simply, you know, that, I would speak for Glenn, but I imagine trying to reach out to 2,000 people is quite daunting to individualize the messages, get them out, respond to them, get his promotional material together and customize it. That's a, I recognize what I went through and I'm sure Counselor Love as well. And it, you know, it's something that if we're serious about making sure we have adequate representation, we may need to figure out how to resource it to get them to a successful election, but then also after they're there to maintain them in the, to maintain them in the seat because then communicating with the people that you're representing becomes a challenge. And I see Kim nodding. We struggle with that on a regular basis, trying to figure out who our audience is and how to get the information back to them. So, you know, I think it leads to a more fulsome discussion and I, you know, I'd be anxious to hear more from Glenn at some point in the future. But congratulations for trying, Glenn. Like, it was a tough slog and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Doncaster, please.
Yeah, thank you for that. And as I mentioned, they will appoint me to committee. So I pretty much have the same input as if elected, although I just, I don't, I don't have a seat at the final day of all the meetings and voted Board of Directors. But even still, at the last Board of Directors meeting, as, just as a committee member, sitting in the audience, I was actually asked to speak on one of the issues. So, so that's one. So there is, there is a governance review going on with FCM. And one of the, and speaking with George Bridge, Peter will probably know, former Warden, Westerns Warden, Western Wardens Caucus, former chair of the Westerns Warden Caucus. He was one of the co-chairs of this Governance Review Task Force that's looking at all of this. And one of the important things and one of the issues I continue to bring up is regional representation. You know, when you're looking across, and I'll just use Ontario as an example, the larger cities have more voting capacity and more voting power currently. And my numbers aren't exactly correct, but the Ontario Caucus represents 30% of the municipalities at FCM, but we have less than 20% representation on the board. And then regionally across the province, it's not balanced either. So right now, with the exception of Tim Tierney, Counselor in the City of Ottawa, there is nobody on the FCM Board of Directors from eastern Ontario. So, so this Governance Review Task Force, just in the numbers, to balance things out, would say that the province of Ontario should get 12 more seats on the board. I don't think that's going to happen, but even if we were to get five, six, seven, eight more seats, and then somehow the caucus figured out how to, to come up with fairer regional representation, you know, that would be much better. So that review will continue on and I will continue to provide my input on that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue, did you have a comment in relation to Counselor Doncaster?
I did, actually. And Counselor Doncaster had guessed, I presume, where I was going because I'm certainly not opposed to what Counselor's Emo's suggestion were. But at the same time, I think it's incumbent upon any of these national bodies, frankly, even a provincial body, to always be sensitive of requiring adaptation to the changing environment as we are going to represent ourselves as a democratic voice of all municipalities across the country. I think it's imperative for FCM, and for that matter, AMO at San Roma, et cetera, to be always cognizant of the shifting sands of the population of municipalities and recognizing any of the things that they must do. And I think that perhaps is an opportunity for, perhaps you, Counselor Doncaster, to champion, along with that review that FCM has already engaged on, is to give careful consideration to that. There is no faster way to irritation than to have disproportionate representation.
Thank you for that. Counselor Rose, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. And the item that I would like to bring forward to the next meeting of County Council in our new business is from my role as the county representative on the Shawwoods Outdoor Education Center. Just so council is aware, the Outdoor Education Center had a five-year participation agreement with the Renfrew County's two major school boards, which provided approximately 45,000 to the Outdoor Education to the Outdoor Education Center, which helped offset some of their fixed costs like accounting, snow plowing, and liability insurance. Currently, what the Shawwoods Outdoor Education Center has proposed to the school boards is that they extend for one year the five-year agreement because of the challenging times, of course, that we're in. But they've received no no response in this regard from the two school boards. So they're just, I just want to make county aware, I want to bring more information to the next meeting. Hopefully, they will have more detailed information that they could bring back. And maybe there's, I don't know if there's anything we can do as as County Council, but I know that Mr. Kelly has very appropriate skills in videography now, so maybe he could do a virtual educational tour that would provide some benefit to the school boards. Thank you.
Well, that's what happens when you start to show your talents and you get you get a whole list of things to do on your on your time off. But in relation to to Mr. Kelly, I'm wondering whether or not you are aware of any funding programs that may be out there that could assist the Shawwoods Educational Center. It would be a shame for for us to lose that, especially in a time of a pandemic where outdoor activities are so so important for everyone.
Through you, Warden, I'll keep an eye out. Of course, Mr. Blackstein is is no stranger to funding funding streams and knows his way around that for those programs as well as the the board, but we'll keep our eye out. You know, I mean, educators in the family, I know it's very difficult for any school to arrange a bus. It's hard enough to get the schools on the bus to get them home. So it's it's a it's a major challenge, although the educators, I'm sure, would love to have outdoor classrooms away from where they are. Just it's it's an unfortunate collateral piece of damage that's that's happening out, you know, across the province, across the world. So but again, we'll keep our eye out and assist where we can. Of course, we are partners with the Shawwoods Education Center as per previous arrangements that we have, so we'll keep an eye out again.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I'm I'm sure you will do. And so, you know, Counselor Bros, if you want to bring back some more information for us and for council about the impact of not receiving the grant from the school boards this year, it would be helpful to us as well. Any other further comments or any new business? Counselor Lynch, please.
Thank you, Warden. Just to remind council and our viewers that Thursday is Purple Day. We're doing that in favor of the Ontario Association of Children's Aid. Thank you. Mr. Kelly, an opportunity.
I duly noted, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other further new business? Seeing none, we have no closed meetings tomorrow, correct? I need a mover and a seconder for the confirmatory bylaw, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the County of Renford at the meeting held on October 28, 2020, be be now numbered, deemed red three times and passed. A move and a second, or Counselor Love and Counselor TJ, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Counselor TJ and Counselor Murphy, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Shorter meeting than we've had in a while. I think this is our our shortest virtual County Council meeting. Sean, if you can.